Good evening. It is 5:45, May 24, 2021. I'll call this meeting to order. All trustees are present with the exception of trustee Jorge Rodriguez. He will join us here after a while. It is, I would have to say, it is so great to have all of us up here together. This is, this is really nice and I changed some things up so I know, wanted to keep you on your toes. Everybody's got a new seat today. Next week you may have another one, next month you may have another one. So at this time, we will go into executive section. We will, the board will adjourn to closed session pursuant to government code section 551.071. And it is 5:46. We are back in open session. It is 6:08. All trustees at this time are present. We'll move on to the open forum for the workshop session. Did we have, no one signed up for the workshop? Okay, so then we will move right on into the workshop for our 2021-2022 budget.
So we've been working on the budget really since December. And so we're getting closer. Of course, our budget year begins July 1. And so hopefully by the June meeting, we'll, we'll have a budget to, to present to you for your consideration. So we're a little bit closer than we were last month even. And so Diane is here to be able to talk us through the current situation with the 21-22 budget. Diane.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. I know you guys will be as excited as me to get this budget adopted. We've been talking about it since December. So hopefully next month, we can accomplish that. I just want to start off talking about the budget parameters that were approved by the board in February. All of the parameters that are highlighted in red have changed since the adoption. Last month, the budget was presented, if you look at the second red bullet point, last month, the budget was presented with a 1.5 million reduction in payroll. This has been increased to 2 million, so about 500,000. And then the bullet point below is the non-payroll budget reduction. Last month, that was presented as 430,000, and we have increased that to 540,000. We're going to talk about these adjustments in more detail here in a few slides. We also added on that last red bullet point, a compensation model that would be 2% of midpoint plus the teachers moving to the market median. This slide gives us a look at where we started and at the budget, at the beginning of the budget process and what it looks like now. So this is a true comparison, apples to apples, looking at a base budget to base budget. So we're looking at what was adopted for the 21 school year compared to what our base budget is now. Overall, on line eight, you can see the net impact to the budget has been reduced by 1.2 million. The revenues on line one have been reduced 1.6 million. 600,000 of that is the reduction in tax revenues and state funding, or in state revenues as a part of the state funding formulas. But we also had some other reductions in interest, KIDU revenue. But we also had some other areas that were positive. But, so this is just the net of all of those changes. The payroll expenditures on line two have been reduced 1.6 million. And mainly though, that reduction is due to the reduction in positions that we discussed last month. And we will go over those again. And also increasing that payroll adjustment from 1 million, what we had last year, to 2 million this year. The non-payroll expenditures have been reduced 540,000, or 680,000. The main, the main part of that is that 540,000 adjustment that I talked about earlier. So on this slide, it goes through those adjustments that I've been, I've mentioned several times. In order to bring down the impact, the net impact to the budget, we made some adjustments to get our actuals closer to the budget. In the past, we had a very conservative budget. And we have had on average about 3% of the budget remaining at the end of the fiscal year. Of course, we, we did careful monitoring during the year, monitoring expenditures and revenues. And also our campuses and departments are really good stewards of their budgets and don't spend 100%. So when we look at the payroll budget, we build a model as if every employee is going to be here every single day of the budget year. And we, we know that just doesn't happen. So that's a lot of our, our budget fallout here. So I went ahead and for the last couple of years, we have made an adjustment to the payroll to bring it closer. We are bumping that up another million this year. And it's always been a part of the budget parameter so that it's just an understanding that that is what is included in the budget. We didn't necessarily go and reduce campuses and departments' budgets. We have just made a line item, knowing that they do not spend 100% of their budgets. So looking at the non-payroll on top there, I took the non-payroll and I excluded the fixed costs. And making that $540,000 adjustment, that's about 5.05% of the budget. So reducing this means that we would leave 2%, 2% unspent budget versus the 7% that we have on average over the last five years. Same thing with the payroll. I took the payroll. I excluded the TRS on behalf. TRS on behalf is a required calculation, and it's really just a book entry. It is an expenditure, but it's offset by revenue. So that's really not true budget savings to us. So I excluded that and taking that $2 million adjustment, that would be 1.79%. So on average, we've had 2% left. And this leaves us about 0.3% unspent budget versus 2%. So you can see, we're getting really, really close to what we, for the actual expenditures. And of course, we will monitor it during the year and, and make sure that if we need to make an amendment to the budget, we would do that. This 0.3% would be about 368,000. Another area that helped with that reduction in the base payroll was the reduction in positions. We talked about these last month. This slide was presented. Nothing has changed on this. And just as a reminder, all of these positions are going to be reduced through attrition. And we talked about the KIDU positions being reduced to match the enrollment and the projected revenue for that. So in this budget for KIDU, we have budgeted revenue and expenditures being equal. So we've discussed the base budget. So now let's look at the cost of the various compensation models that we have prepared. And I know the slide has a bunch of numbers. So let's just kind of walk through it. The first column is our base budget. And then the next three columns are the various models that we have prepared for tonight. Lines three through eight are the changes in compensation. And they're highlighted in gray to kind of make them stand out as, as the changes. You'll note on lines six and seven, we did have an addition to the base budget from last month. And that was to account for the state mandated percentage increase in TRS. Line six, that is part of that TRS on behalf contribution that I talked about earlier. So that is offset with revenue. So the true additional cost to the district is the 212, 737. And then we of course have factored in those proposed adjustments. If you look at the next three models, line three and four represent the general pay increase for each of those models along with the equity adjustments that were presented by Tasby several months ago. Line five is a new add from what was presented last month. And I sent an update to you guys this morning about this. We currently pay a bilingual stipend of $4,000 to our bilingual teachers. And we would like to increase that to 6,000 to help with the recruitment of highly qualified bilingual teachers. So the cost to do this would be 140,000. So line 10 is just giving you the total cost of those three models. So this slide just puts everything together and gives you the net impact to the budget for the various compensation models. The impact is on line eight, highlighted in blue. So you know, the base budget is the first column. You see that an impact would be 5 million, 5.1 million. And as you go to the other three models, you can see what that net impact would increase by to offer those compensation adjustments to employees. Line nine, we were asked to also provide a one-time payment amount. So if we were to do a one-time payment, typically in the past, we've done that as 1% of salary or 500, whichever is greater. And so that would be a little, that cost of that one-time adjustment would be a little bit over a million. So if we were to do that in, with the 1% model, the net impact to the budget would be 7.5 million. So in June, the board will be asked to approve a, the debt service budget and the child nutrition budget in addition to the general operating budget. And up to this point, we've just focused on the general operating. So I want to go through the debt service and child nutrition budgets tonight as well. This slide gives you the detail of the revenues and all of the debt service payments that are required for this fiscal year. Because our fiscal year-end is June 30th, we must adopt tax, a tax revenue budget to cover the August debt payment that will be made at the end of the fiscal year. But when we budget the actual expenditures, we budget for that payment that is going to be made the first August at the beginning of the fiscal year. So for example, we will build tax collections to cover the August 2022 debt service payment. But the expenditures will include the debt service payment for the August 2021 payment. So for this reason, I always look at the impact on the fund balance going into the next year. So on this slide, you see line three is 59.3 million. And this is, our debt service revenues are our tax collections. But we do have another line there for other revenues. 1.5 million of this other revenues is the payment we receive from the city of Grapevine Tiff. That, that agreement is we will get a payment to help offset the, the bonds that were issued for the Grapevine Middle School. The debt payments on lines four, five are those debt payments for that August 2021 and our debt payment for February of 2022. And our debt payments are always made in August and February. This budget also includes a bond prepayment that would be made in February of 2022 of 12.5 million. And if we were to prepay this amount, it would be the Series 2011 bonds. And this would reduce future interest costs by 6.5 million. And then we have a few fees there that we have to pay. And I do want to note that this budget is built on the current tax rate of 33.67 cents. And we will adopt a budget based on this current tax rate because we don't, we, of course, we have to adopt, adopt a budget before we even have our certified tax values. So if something were to change with those, we would have to make some amendment, amendments to the budget. And we will get our certified tax values July 25th. So in August is when we will have a workshop and talk about what we want to do with the tax rate. So you can see on line nine, with this budget, we are budgeting to use about 2.1 million of our fund balance. So line 10 is what I'm projecting that we're going to end the current fiscal year with. So June 30th of '21, 70.9 million. Now, looking at our financial statements, if you see that large amount, it kind of makes people wonder. But because we are June 30th and our debt payments are scheduled in August, that, that fund balance is there to make that August payment in the next two, in two months from our fiscal year-end. So that would leave our projected ending fund balance as June 30th, '22 at 68.9 million. So when I'm building this budget, I always do a fund balance analysis. And so this slide walks you through that analysis of where we're starting. So line one is where we're starting the fiscal year for the budget that we're adopting. And we would take in, take out that August 21 payment. That would leave us a projected fund balance at 83121 of 30.1 million. Now, this is 48.6% of our highest anticipated bond payment. And based on recommendations from our financial advisors, they recommend that we keep between 40 and 50% of that amount in our fund balance. So we would be a meeting that requirement. The other thing is that this is assuming that we will prepay bonds in the amount of 12.5 in the '22 and '23 fiscal year. Of course, looking at the tax rate, if we were to change that tax rate, we would just have to adjust that prepayment amount down. Here is the preliminary child nutrition budget, and I am presenting this as a base budget with the 1% model and the 2% model. So you can see there without any adjustments to compensation, that an impact to the budget would be a positive 77,000 to 10. If we did do that one-time model on line seven, you can see that it would bring that amount down to 9,000, but before the one-time payment, it would be 55,000 and then 34,000. Okay, now we have questions.
Do we have questions for Diane? Anyone?
Any questions? Diane, thanks for putting that together. Is there a way we can get an actual analysis that shows basically this in the school year's actuals versus what our budget's going to be, just so we can have a comparison from actual to budget?
That's in, you mean for this current fiscal year we're in?
Yeah.
Okay, that's in the projection report, that, the budget update. Yeah, so that it compares the budget to what I'm projecting that expenditures to be.
Okay, so you did extrapolate that out for what our remaining expenses were going to be.
Yeah, well, the way I do that is I start doing that in January and I take, so we start doing it in January because we have six months of actual data. And then I just project out the next six months based on the prior year expenditures. On the payroll, we actually go and build what's in our payroll system. And we're able to estimate what it would be each month. So we start doing that in January. So the one that's in this month's agenda has 10 months worth of actual data.
Yeah, I saw that. Didn't realize that's what you'd done based on what we previously discussed. For the non-teacher, I know we've done a full-time equivalent analysis for teachers and students that we're going to have this year. Have we done it for non-teachers?
Well, we don't necessarily, well, when we, yes, when we look at FTEs, we build it with our salary negotiation plan, our system. And so we look at the FTEs that the, this current year budget was on, and we compare it to the FTEs that we are budgeting for this year. We are not adding any non-teaching staff to the FTEs for this year.
And do we get surveys or analysis from other third parties that kind of make sure we're comparable to full-time equivalents that I could look at?
We, we have not, yeah, we have not done that. We are going to be doing a staffing study in the fall. And we're, we're getting Tasby to do that. But at this point, I don't have anything from a third party that compares staffing.
When looking at the revenues, when we're looking at all of our revenues, we just have one line item. It's like 188 million. Is that including our university and all sources of revenues, other, other income? I know there's that $1.5 million we get from the federal government for water.
Flood control, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So last month, I did present that in detail. This month, I just did the one. But I mean, I can, I can get that for you if you need that.
Yeah, it's just hard to recall all the slides in front of me.
Yeah.
And then regarding debt. So we're, so for the $40 million roughly that you had projected, that's, that's the debt minimum payment we have to make. And then the next line, line item of, it's like 7.8 million. Was that also minimum debt service we have to pay, or was that above and beyond?
Okay, so, yeah, can we put this slide back up?
Just because it was chopped up into two lines, it was kind of confusing.
Yeah. There, the minimum, it's the minimum debt payment for August of 2021 and the minimum debt payment for February 2022.
Hang on just a second, so we get the slides up. Are you working on? Are you good or you want the slide back up?
So then, so then the 12.5 really is just above and beyond if we decide we want to do that. Dog up, thank you.
Louis?
You asked about the third party. Don't we do a Gallup poll? Don't we do a Gallup survey or something? I thought we, I thought we did something, Gemma. Am I, I'm not, please tell me I'm not.
Do a survey, it's not. We do a Gallup survey that's for employee engagement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're not losing your mind. Laura, you had a question?
Yes, I had a question on how do you determine the 12.5 prepayment? Can you do more or less, just kind of?
That's what I, I plug that in to determine what, how much I can do with our projected fund balance. That's kind of like why I go through that fund balance analysis to see what we can do and keep, still keep our fund balance within that recommended.
So that's the maximum we could do and still keep the fund balance that we want, that is recommended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
I do have a couple of questions about the bilingual teachers. Is the, so going, it was at 4,000, it's going to 6,000, is that correct? Okay, and has the demand for bilingual teachers gone up for our district or universally for North Texas? Yeah, I was like, Gemma, don't sit down, sorry. I just want to understand that, that, I mean, that difference.
We've had some recent resignations that will cause us to hire a few more than we normally hire. The demand for the need across the district or across the area is increasing. We need a pool for some people. We, we are recruiting heavily in, in areas not around here, in El Paso and down in the valley. And we need something to say to them, please come to GCISD. So we, you know, our top 100 workplace, we've got that. It's a destination city. We've got great cities in GCISD. So we need a little extra to get them to really open up to coming to our district.
And they did a compensation, we looked at compensation last year. Is this, have we run this through Tasby? Is this something that they find is a standard?
So we, in the area, the stipends are between 3 and $5,000. With a $6,000 stipend, we feel pretty strongly that we'll be able to grab their attention to get them here. So we, we do have some openings. Becky, we talked about staffing. You asked me about that. So at that time, we didn't have as many openings. So I do have a concern about recruiting the people here. I do think we'll be able to do it, but it's going to be a little bit stressful until we get them here.
Right, thank you.
Another thing to note on that is if the other districts are between 3 and 5, and so that would place us a little bit above. However, when you look at our overall pay, we'd probably be, you know, right in line because the, the pay is lower.
Yeah, so the deadline to file protests is now passed. Do we have a rough idea of how about shaping up and what impact that may have on our collections? And then my follow-up question to that. I mean, I was on a conference call this morning. It sounds like they're trying to get the HP3 cleanup bill through possibly tonight, maybe tomorrow. How are we kind of looking more on a global level?
So we, we got our estimates for May. And I don't like to put a lot of value in those just because they are before the protests. So our July values will have, all of those protests are, or most of them already settled. There's, there'll still be some, but yeah, I.
Have, have you heard from them? I, anecdotally, I'm not feeling like they've gotten flooded with protests as in years past. But hopefully, everybody that wanted to file a protest still did.
Yeah, I don't think our ARBs, they didn't look significantly higher than they have in the past. But I didn't really go and like compare them. But that's something I can go and look and, and get back to you.
As long as there's not something huge looming on the horizon.
No, there's nothing huge. So last month, or no, a couple of weeks ago, the Tarrant County Appraiser had a meeting for the taxing entities. And he basically reported kind of like what I had reported when I said I was just going to do a 0%. He's looking at residential across the county going up 6 to 10%. But on the commercial side, it's going to be significantly less. And for GCISD, 50% of our tax base is commercial and 50% of our tax base is residential. And a large part of our commercial is based on tourism. He, he did say the, the tourism is going to see some declines. So just.
So, and I mean, that's to be expected because this is the looking at 2020, not looking at 2021.
Exactly, and you know, I think the positive thing for GCISD is that I think the tourism industry is bouncing back very quickly. I mean, it's, you know, you see it on the news, how many, you can't get a rental car, you know, people are flying. They're ready to get out. And so I think that's, that's a good for us.
Louis?
Yes, I got a question going back to the prepayment of the bond. So, you know, we're starting out with the 70 million fund balance. And then you're paying basically, you know, the 30 million. And it gets us down to, you know, the 12.5. And it keeps us, it'll be to our financial advisors, if I remember right, wanted us between 40 and 50%. And after we pay it, and it gets us to 48.6. I'm curious what, like. if there's an equation that if we pay off another million, if that goes down, that 48.6% goes down 1%. You know what I'm saying? Or if we pay down 5 million, it moves that needle, if it's a stair-step effect? Yeah, I would just be curious. And then, or, and, you know, 40 to 50%, I mean, we're talking, that's a, it's a good chunk. And so my question is, I know interest rates are low and being someone in the business, interest rates are probably not going to move for quite some time, you know, if we want to accelerate this. Or, but then again, we don't know what bionic legislation, legislation does in HB3 and all that example. So I'm curious, maybe in, in our next budget workshop or whenever, just provide a little bit more detail in that. So, in, in regards to that, because, you know, if we can, if, if another couple of million moves at one point, I'd be interested to know about that.
I can do that. So, you know, the reason, our, our recommended fund balance is a little bit higher than maybe, say, someone, another school district, just because 50% of our tax base is commercial. And it could take, you know, one hit and lots. So that is, but, I mean, you can see we're on the high end, so I mean, we could, we could.
Well, and, and you talk about that, you know, yeah, it's coming back, but, you know, you've got rent forgiveness, you've got lease forgiveness, you can't evict anybody. And it'll be, I'll be interesting to see what our, normally in GCISD, we have less than 1% I think default on tax collections. It'll be interesting to see what our tax collection will be going forward from the, from the commercial standpoint. And so I, it's not falling on deaf ears that I am aware that that percentage can move without us making it move. Meaning it could be just due to the economic factors of what we just came through with rental relief and et cetera, and people just not paying because you can't evict anybody or do anything. And so, especially in the commercial piece of it. So that's, that's an interesting point. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Louis. Do you have any other questions for Dan? Casey?
Hey, Dan, do we, do we look at our capital budget with any of our unallocated funds? See if there's any potential amounts that can be freed up? Could also pay down debt as well, so you don't have to necessarily go through your debt service fund?
Yes, so I think I mentioned this last month, that in July, we're planning on looking at our 2011 bonds and coming back with a plan for immediate needs we have. And that could be an option to use some of that money for that purpose, too.
Then in light of COVID, knowing that, you know, commercial property rates, our property values could go down. I think maybe we as a board should also consider just maybe not making that additional 12.5 million if we don't need to, just because you don't know how your values are going to play out. Maybe it's, maybe it's 2 million, maybe it's 4 million. Could we get some other options on that? Instead of increasing it, maybe you decrease it? Isn't you also free up money to go back to the community? And put it back in our hands because people need to pay rent. People have leases they got to pay for their businesses, so it's something else to consider.
Yes, that's certainly something we can look at. I, I would recommend we go ahead and adopt a budget based on the current tax rate, just because we will not get our property values until July. That would, is, that would be when we talk about what, what we can do with the tax rate. But I can certainly show you different options of what the budget would look like if we changed it. We can always go back and amend the budget. If we were to, to lower the tax rate, we can always go back and amend the budget.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Dan? So we'll look at this in June. We'll have a hearing scheduled for tonight, one of our agenda items. We'll schedule the hearing. And then, so if anyone has any questions before that June meeting, Dan's always, always available. Loves talking about the budget. So, no other questions. That was our only item on the workshop tonight. So according to our, our agenda, we cannot start our meeting until 7:00. So it is 6:41 at the moment. So we will go ahead and take a break, and we'll be back here beginning right on schedule at 7:00. We have a lot, a lot to do. So, thank you, guys. So we're good. So it is 7:01. We are back in regular session. Thank you all for hanging around. It is exciting to actually see faces today. I am just thrilled to see, see your eyes. At least next month, we will see your entire face. So at this time, the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District, Board of Trustees, and Central Administration, we will pause for a moan of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. Now we will have the U.S. and the Texas pledges. Tonight, we are honored to have the students from Cross Timbers Middle School. They will join us to lead the pledges. They will proudly represent their school by leading the U.S. pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and then share thoughts on how they are progressing towards the portrait of a graduate. Come on up.
Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Good evening. We are from the Cross Timbers Dual Program, and we are here to talk about how the GCISD Portrait of a Graduate skills have prepared us for the 2021 to 2021 school year, sorry, 2020 to 2021 school year.
Hi, my name is Kaylee. I'm in the eighth grade and involved in Spanish for AP, French, and Theater. Por la pandemia, muchas cosas tuvieron que cambiar este año con la manera en que podemos aprender y convivir con los demás. A mí, personalmente, me afectó mucho aprender en línea porque yo soy una persona que aprende mejor con cosas visuales y manuales. Pero todo eso está en la computadora y hay un límite en que puedes ver las cosas mientras aprendiendo y también da mucho dolor de ojos y cabeza. A pesar de todo eso, poder aprender en línea también tiene muchas ventajas, como poder aprender desde cuando no puedes atender a la escuela. Lo que yo hice para poder aprender mejor fue regular mis horarios y cuando hacer los trabajos que se necesitan hacer fuera de la escuela.
Good evening. My name is Emily. I'm also in the eighth grade, and I'm involved in Spanish for AP Athletics and Tal's. Buenas noches. Hoy voy a hablar sobre cómo el retrato de las habilidades de un graduado me ayudó a ser más organizado como estudiante. Una habilidad que usaba todos los días era la de resolver problemas. Este año me ha traído muchos desafíos y para tener éxito tuve que adaptarme a mi entorno. Comencé a autoregular mi aprendizaje y mi horario, lo que me ayudó a convertirme en un estudiante mucho mejor, mucho mejor.
Hola, me llamo Arya. Estoy en el séptimo grado y involucrada en Español 3 Pre-Ap, Academia de Aspire, Deportes y Teatro. Due to COVID this year, I spent the first time in school online. That was quite difficult for me because it was hard for me to learn Spanish over WebEx with glitches and no immediate access to a teacher to help me understand. After a few weeks, I used the skill Problem Solver, Effective Communicator, and Global Citizen Skills to help me learn how to learn online. I became an effective communicator and now I'm a global citizen because I can hold a WebEx in a different language, which can help me internationally. In a way, online learning has been a blessing in disguise. Hopefully, we can become more like the portrait of a GCISD graduate.
Me llamo Hadley. Estoy en el sexto grado involucrado en Español 2 Pre-Ap, Aspire Silver Dancers Equero. This year has been really tough as we have had to make changes to our learning environment and work our way around learning remotely. Paper was usually the norm, but now we have to complete assignments on our computers. In dual language especially, we have to learn a completely different language and do it virtually. When I'm given an assignment, there are times I'm having trouble solving a question, figuring out how to use a new website, et cetera. But I have used the skill of problem solving to help me. I can always think back to what my teachers told me and use effective strategies I've been given. The teachers always try so hard to make sure students have a fun time working in their classrooms and learn something new every day. Before the pandemic, I did not like working in groups of people. But this year has taught me that it's okay to ask for help from others or wait until they're ready to continue working. Now, as a collaborative worker, every time that we're given an assignment that we need to complete in groups, I look forward to being able to work with someone who can help me and who I myself can help. With everything new, we've, we've had to figure out, it's been a lot harder trying to figure out how to work our way through this year. But this amazing program has provided me with amazing opportunities to become a better learner and succeed as a student.
Thank you to Ms. Gigi for being a wonderful Spanish teacher. Gracias.
That is a great job, girls. Before you leave, though, if you, hang on just a second. We didn't get to see your faces, so I want to find, when I call your name, if you would let us know. And there's, I'm trying to listen to the Spanish, but I missed one of your names. So we have Emily. Who's Emily? There we go. Emily, you're an eighth grader, okay? And Hadley, there's Hadley, okay? And you're a sixth grader. Arwa, Arya, there we go. You are seventh. And Kylie, Kaylee. I should know that, my granddaughter is Kaylee, so. Great, you did a great job. I know you were nervous, but y'all did a fantastic job. And your Spanish is just, yes, very good. I will say your Spanish was great, but I will ask, you know, someone who speaks it too. So, Dr. Halliburton, thank you very much for bringing the Wolves to the house tonight. So, and great job howling. Do you have any other special guests or staff that you'd like to recognize?
For AP exam, as eighth graders.
Oh, wow.
Our amazing Jason, Michael Calasi, who is currently our KLA teacher, but next year will be our AP. And then, Tinker is our amazing librarian in the back.
Thank you all again. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for our recognitions, followed by our lead 2.0 highlight this evening. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, thank you. First of all, we're going to introduce our valedictorians and salutatorians. And so I'll ask them to make their way in. We'll give them just a moment. All right, take us a little bit of time to transition between recognitions tonight. But first, I think we have something really important, President Pardo, to, we need to go back a little bit on the, on the agenda.
Not that, it's not important, Becky, I apologize. But, yeah, I know. That is, that was mine. I was reading the script and I just bounced right over you, so I, I apologize, Becky. At this mo, at this time, before we do the recognitions, guys, we are going to have the Statement of the Elected Officer and Administration of the Oath of Office, so we can swear in the newly elected trustee. So, Becky?
Becky, if you'll join Kim Hutto, who's the clerk of the board, she'll provide the oath of office.
I, Becky St. John.
I, Becky St. John.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office. Of School Board trustee. Of the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District. Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Now, we'll say this is a nice way to go into because Becky was a valedictorian of her high school class. See, I had a reason for what I did there. So now, Dr. Ryan, I will turn it over to you for the recognitions.
Okay, let's recognize our vows and sows. Over the next two weeks, as well as last week, more than 1,200 seniors in GCISD will walk across the stage and receive their high school diplomas. This is certainly a milestone for these students and their families, as well as the GCISD staff and community members who've supported them throughout the years. And tonight, we want to recognize an extraordinary part of the class of 2021 as we have the valedictorian and salutatorian from the Collegiate Academy, from Colleyville Heritage High School, from Grapevine High School, and for I University Prep joining us. So when you hear your name, if you would come forward, and we'll have a trustee meet you at the front with a certificate recognizing your accomplishment as leaders in the class of 2021. And then after you receive your certificate, if you could remain up front. So first of all, from the people who have already graduated, the Collegiate Academy had graduation last week. The valedictorian is Isabella Ruprich. Isabella. Isabella is going to be joined by the salutatorian, Deborah Cho. So you get the pleasure of watching everybody else come up and do the same exact thing. And then we'll hand you the microphone, and you can tell us what's going to happen next for you. So from. So from Collyville Heritage High School, the valedictorian is Ashwin Kada. Salutatorian Jay Opadie. Next, we have from Grapevine High School, valedictorian Avanash Shruni Basan. And salutatorian Mina Chow. And from I University Prep, the valedictorian Sarah Stewart. And joining us by WebEx tonight is salutatorian Gayatri Rajamoni. There we go. Certainly want to recognize our principals. First of all, from Collegiate Academy, Bobby Knutts. From Collyville Heritage, Dr. James Whitfield. From Grapevine High School, Alex Fingers. And in charge of our virtual learning is Dr. Kay Rogers. And then Kristen, do we have the microphone? We're going to pass the microphone to each one of our vows and sows. Want to hear a little bit about where you're headed next. All right. Congratulations.
University of Texas Austin as well for biochemistry.
No surprise here, I'm also going to the University of Texas at Austin and studying biomedical engineering.
Changing up here, I'll be going to the University of Texas at Austin for computer science.
Hello, I'm going to the University of Texas. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm going to Cornell University for English. I'm not sure. For history or English? I'm not sure yet.
Hello, I'm going to Brown University for business, economics, international relations. Probably some of those.
I'm going to Texas Women's University for physical therapy.
I'm going to Trinity University for mathematics.
All right. So it's pretty easy to see which ones the parents are, but if, if you're a parent, if you could just raise, raise your hand so that we could recognize you, and let's give them a round of applause as well. To our scholars, we just want to say thank you and good luck to you, and we wish you all the best in the future and always, always remember GCISD. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Congratulations. So next, we would like to recognize a group of student athletes from Collyville Heritage that had some amazing success in the UIL State Championships this year. These students are some of the biggest reasons why Collyville Heritage is currently ranked number eight in the 5A UIL Lone Star Cup, which is an award that honors the best overall athletic and academic programs in Texas. Along with GHS is currently tied for first, the GHS and Collyville Heritage make the rare appearance of two schools in the top 10 in the Lone Star Cup standings in any classification. So, of course, last week we recognized the folks from what you would consider to be the other school. So we'll, we'll just focus on our friends from Collyville Heritage this evening. And when I call your name or your team, certainly you could come forward and trustee Louis Sullins is going to present you with the certificate. So first of all, we'll start with the girls cross-country team that you see here. Nick Taylor is the head coach, and we appreciate you guys being here this evening. The Panthers finished in third place, bronze medal as a team at the UIL State Cross Country Championships in November. This is the first podium finish for Collyville Heritage in just its third visit to the state meet. Top finisher for Collyville Heritage was freshman Ally Love, who finished in seventh place. And she was joined in the top 15 by Felisa Sahib, who finished in 13th. In addition to her incredible performance during the cross-country season, Ally was also the silver medalist and state runner-up for the 1,600 meter and 3,200 meter races at the UIL Track and Field State Meet in Austin earlier this month. And we're now going to hand the microphone to Coach Taylor for a few words.
I was unaware I was doing a few words. So, thank y'all so much for having us. It's just been absolutely wonderful year with these young ladies. During the quarantine and the pandemic, they just kept working hard, running every day, running for each other, and I couldn't be more proud of them. It was absolute blast this year, and we thank you all so much for all your support.
Thank you, Coach Taylor. So we're going to ask each member of the team, surprise, to grab the microphone and tell us your name, tell us what grade you're in. If you're a senior, tell us what your plans are for next year.
Hey, I'm Ally Love and I'm a freshman.
I'm Hayden Cowdery, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jacqueline Turner, I'm a junior.
I'm Felisa Sahib, I'm a senior and I'm going to Central Arkansas to run.
My name's Mia Su Hu, I'm a senior, I'm going to Texas Tech to major in biology and get my PhD.
My name's Kimberly Keith, I'm a sophomore.
Thank you, Coach Taylor. Another round of applause for the bronze medalists this year at the UIL State Cross Country Meet. Thank you. Next, we'd like to invite Senior Abby Deveraux and GCISD swim and dive head coach Daniel Jau to come forward. Abby won the UIL 5A One-Meter Diving State Championship back in March. This is Abby's second consecutive diving state championship after being the only diver to score over 200 in the prelims. Deveraux posted a score of 468.20 in the finals, nearly 40 points higher than the second-place finisher. Coach Jau, if you could take the microphone and tell us a little bit about the season, tell us a little bit about Abby.
Well, Abby's the greatest diver that's ever graced our program, or one of the greatest divers that graced our program. When I think of Abby, a few, some words come up to mind, grit, determination, perseverance. We're just so proud of her. She's going to dive for University of Kentucky, bring honor to GCISD, and we look forward to all our accomplishments and future accomplishments and endeavors. You want to say anything? Got you?
I do want to say something. I mean, Abby has really, she came into the program, not as like a diver that grew up diving, but she came in and had to choose between different sports, and she's just a natural born athlete, but she put in the, she had the desire, the determination and dedication to do what needed to be done to succeed. And so, we are really looking forward to see what you do in your future endeavors. Love you, Abby.
Great round of applause for Abby and the fantastic coaching staff here in GCISD. Thank you so much. That's good. All right. Thank you. Wait. So, you bet. Abby, I'm surprised you didn't wear both of those medals tonight. I mean, you had your chance right there to be making all that noise with the gold medal there. Congratulations to you and good luck to you. Next, we'd like to invite Evan Ashley forward and Collyville Heritage Wrestling Coach Dan McCready. There you go. You've got that gold medal on. There you go. Evan won the UIL 5A 152-pound wrestling state championship in April, and he won three matches over the state tournament weekend, capping off an undefeated senior season in which he posted a 34 wins and zero losses record. That requires a round of applause, certainly. So trustee Mindy McClure will present you with the certificate, and then at the same time, we'll hand Coach McCready a microphone, and you can tell us about the season and about Evan.
Wow, I mean, really, what could we say about wrestling? You know, wrestling, we didn't know we were going to get to wrestle until probably about, you know, February, I think, right about the time where we should have been getting done, they were like, in a month, we'll start. I thought, okay, great. So, but through that all, and I'll be honest, this is my first year at Collyville Heritage, and, you know, Evan being as just, it just kind of, just dominating, I guess, there's no other word than, than that with Evan. It really is a testament to him. He trained a lot over the summer by himself, and, and he has a great support system. You know, his, his parents are here tonight, and his little brother, who's been drugged to everywhere in the world wrestling-wise, you know? And, and we just have an awesome support system, you know, with Dr. Whitfield and then Coach Gerlick's here as well. I mean, it, it just is no better than that. And, you know, when I, when I, right after I got the job, you know, Coach Lazo reached out to me and was like, you know, Evan Ashley's the real deal. And I said, well, that's good. You know, I'd like to come in and try to have people make me look good right away. And Evan did. And he had just an amazingly tough match in the semifinals at state. And honestly, there were times where I was more nervous than not, but we had a plan, which we did not talk about the plan ahead of time, but I was like, this is the plan. I was like screaming it, and he just picked it up and did it. And like, high school wrestlers don't always do that. So, and then in the finals, he went out and just, you know, decked the kid. I mean, it was amazing. Just, just rip a kid apart. And, I mean, it was, there's no other way to mention it. We wrestled that kid three times, and each time we beat him by more, which is usually the exact opposite. Each time he usually gets closer. And Evan just opened up and that was that. So, amazingly proud of him, and I guess cheer him.
I'm going to the University of Dubuque, Iowa. So, yeah, that should be fun.
Let's, wait a minute. Wait, whoa. Little brother who has been drug everywhere, you got to come up here and take a picture with big brother. There you go. Parents, y'all can come up here too, unless you want to take the picture. So, there you go. There we go. Round of applause for gold medalist Evan Ashley. And of course, we do have our executive director of athletics, Brian Gerlick, is here, along with Dr. James Whitfield, the principal of Collyville Heritage High School. Thank you all for being here, for your support. Next, we want to invite Collyville Heritage High School's science teacher, Jason Crump, to come forward and meet trustee Jorge Rodriguez. Mr. Crump? Mr. Crump has been named just one of three finalists from Texas for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Mr. Crump began teaching in 2008 after a senior career in the healthcare industry, and he came to Collyville Heritage in 2019. He's taught pre AP chemistry and AP physics, as well as STEM chemistry in the STEM Academy. He also sponsors the Science Olympiad Team, Science UIL Chess Club, and is a graduate of Grapevine High School. The PAEMST Awards were established by Congress in 1983 and are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. A national selection committee will now review the three finalists from Texas and choose one to be the awardee. Each presidential awardee receives a certificate signed by the President of the United States and a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation. And that's at an award ceremony in Washington DC. Congratulations, Jason. So, we also want to recognize the leadership of Tony Zahn. Jason, we'll hand you the microphone, and if there's anybody else that you would like to recognize or thank, or anything else that you would like to do, tell us where you're going next year for college.
I've got my fingers crossed I'm Texas A&amp;M.
There you go.
Tony nominated several months back. If that comes across your email, it's sort of some disbelief and immense inertia to put forth the best application possibly can. And so that's basically what went into this. But the leadership at GCISD is kind of key to all this. You know, as science teacher from day one, everything is about open doors, possibilities, and doing everything we can to make science education as strong as possible here. And without that kind of support, it's not as easy to write a patient that feels as honest as it can be. So, I owe everything to the leadership here, Tony specifically, my team at Collyville, etc. They're great people, and that's kind of key to all this, so.
Thank you very much. Another round of applause for Jason Crump. Congratulations, and good luck for you. So we'll move directly into the monthly Lead 2.0 highlight as we continue to use Lead 2.0 to guide our work. Each month, we highlight a different aspect of the district in the portion of the meeting to show our trustees and our community how our Lead 2.0 goals are impacting our students this month. We're going to highlight the positive impact that our Avid program is having on our GCISD students. So we're turning it over to our Avid folks. Led by Brandy Carey.
Okay, good evening, board. Dr. Ryan, my name is Brandy Carey, and I am the Director of Social Studies in Avid here in GCISD. And it is my extreme honor and privilege to share with you tonight. Just a handful of things about the impact of Avid in GCISD. So just big picture, Avid stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination, and we are really passionate about closing the opportunity gap by removing barriers and raising expectations and engaging all of our students and teachers and equipping them for success in the next step of their journey beyond us, equipping them for that college and career readiness. So that's who we are, and that's part of what kind of unites us and brings us here tonight. Obviously, I think you guys can probably hear just from that, that we believe very deeply and find such a great connection into our Lead 2.0 goals, and in particular, Goal 1 and Goal 3, really about identifying and removing those barriers and also making sure that the learning environments that our students are experiencing really reflect who they are and what they need and engage them in the best really reflect who they are and what they need, and engage them in the best possible way. So I want to share with you just some big picture information about Avid here. So our Avid campuses, that encompasses all of our, all of our middle school campuses, including Heritage Middle School, which is an Avid National Demonstration School, one of only 49 in the state, which is an amazing accomplishment. They serve really as an exemplar for others across the state and across the nation when they look at, what does Avid mean and what does it look like? HMS is an exemplar of that. Avid is also at both of our comprehensive high schools. When we look at the Avid elective class, this school year, we had 886 students that were served in the Avid elective, which is about 13% of those campuses. And specifically, you know, a lot of senior recognition tonight, so I want to make sure that our Avid seniors are recognized as well in this highlight. So we have this year 43 Avid seniors, and of those 43 kiddos, they've amassed 108 college acceptances and over $830,000 in scholarships earned. So that's amazing, and we're so proud of our Avid seniors. But I really wanted to hopefully personalize some of that for you guys tonight. So I am, at this time, going to turn it over to our Colleyville Heritage Avid Site Coordinator, Meral Kwasimi, and she is going to introduce one of our amazing Avid seniors, who's going to speak with you. So Meral?
Good evening. My name is Meral Kwasimi, and I'm the Avid 4 teacher at Colleyville Heritage, along with being the site coordinator, excuse me. Three years ago, I had a vision that I wanted to give back to our seniors that have been in the Avid program, and I'm so grateful for Dr. Grobel for seeing this vision through. So for the last three years, we've been able to award three deserving seniors a total of $1,500 each year. So tonight with me, I have Ben Merrick. He is the top finalist, first place winner, receiving $750 scholarship money to take to his university that he's committing to, UTA. He has been in Avid for seven years, and today, he's going to share with you how Avid has impacted his career.
Albert Einstein, considered to be one of the most highly gifted and talented human beings for the work he has done for theoretical science. Once said that, "In the middle of every difficulty lies opportunity." Throughout the seven years I've been in Avid, I've learned that challenges strengthen not only character, but the ability to adapt to new surroundings, to test my limits, where I felt like these accomplishments that I aspired seem so far in reality. When I felt the need to give up, my thoughts were directed to questions on my motivation. Am I doing this for myself at this moment and at this time? Or am I doing what I need for my future? Avid taught me to look back at this moment and appreciate what challenges I decided to face, rather than push them aside. This is the Avid way, where one man or a woman looks up to the sky and sees 5,000 stars, each representing a new challenge and opportunity. I've learned that commitment is not easy, and important, and most importantly, I've learned the true significance of friendship. I've met many people from all different places in life. Each moment with them, I cherish. However, I wonder if I gave my all to them, would they look back at their lives and see me as a high school friend or a joker? Will they remember me for being there for them when they need a help, as I would want them to be there for me? No one likes to be on an island by themselves. Ever since I was a kid, I was always afraid of making a leap into more advanced learning. I saw I had a difficulty that some might relate to. The difficulty that I saw myself experience was high-functioning autism. I didn't know this until my sophomore year in high school. But what I didn't know is the obsession I have for science. An obsession being the byproduct of autism. With learning about autism, I started understanding why I was not the same, why I couldn't reciprocate communicationally the same way as others. Most severely, it ruined my self-esteem, that I'll never be as good as the kids, as the kids in my left and right in class, that I'll always be at the bottom of the barrel. Avid, though, forced me not to see this diagnosis as a halting point in my life, rather as a strength to help me overcome obstacles in the future. The way Avid did this was by requiring me to take higher-level classes, which I didn't feel comfortable with, but it's not about comfortability when the future of your life depends on what work you do, on the hard work you do now. I once, I took one AP class, which was United States History, the senior year. Not only did I feel obligated to take two AP classes, which was a requirement for Avid as a senior, I took three. I do not regret taking AP classes, however, I regret how long it took me to realize that autism didn't stop me from being any different than any other person. I find it interesting that we take for granted success with a grade, rather than how much work you put in. As for those who succeed the most, Bill Gates, Steve Jobs, and so on, every single one of them had a single trait that stood out, which was grit. Grit is not how well you do, but rather how hard you work for what you're able to get out of it. That's what made them stand out. The famous singer and songwriter Frank Sinatra wrote in his song, "My Way." "But through it all, when there was doubt, I ate it up and spit it out. I faced it all, and I stood tall, and did it my way." I hope that my life reflects these words he uses, that when in the face of a challenge like autism, or many challenges to come, that I suck up and do the best with what I have until I have nothing else left to give, and to make sure that when I do this, I should pride in my work, knowing I'm here through the people I've met along my expedition upon the great journey of my life, of life. They've gotten me here, and to know that this life, I did it my way.
So Ben, that was amazing, and we are so proud of you and all that you have accomplished, and we know that this is just the beginning of all the things that you're going to do. So, yes, so Ben has accomplished so much through that individual determination, but also through the support and the scaffolded strategies and systems that were in place as a result of the Avid College Readiness System on all of our campuses that I shared with you guys earlier. So I wanted to just show you just a very quick snapshot of just some things from this year and all of the challenges that existed in this year, the ways that Avid was in place, really as a system of support for all of our students, whether they were in the Avid elective or not. You can see, there's a snapshot of one of our liaisons from one of our middle school campuses, that one of the tenants of Avid who really believe in making sure that students are set up for success for organization, right? And teaching them to use their planner and document, what are the things that are coming up? And, you know, as we started the school in a unique way this school year, that campus wanted to make sure that they were ready to go with organization. So they purchased planners for their students and delivered them to their doorstep, so they were ready to go. Teaching students how to effectively take notes and make meaning out of their notes in diverse ways, whether that is writing it on paper there and processing it using our digital tools. And we know that's a skill set they're going to need, and it will serve them well in college as well, and building that college-going culture, right? I think it's interesting to see that from, directly from our students and their quotes there that, that Avid, yes, has equipped them with the skill sets that they need in terms of taking notes and staying organized, but also giving them the confidence to stand here tonight and give a speech in front of you all. And knowing too that they have a support system and what we lovingly refer to as the Avid family. So also this spring, we worked collaboratively across lots of different seats across the district, teachers, Avid Site Coordinators, counselors, fifth-grade teams, all worked together to really take a look at our students and who might benefit also from stepping into that Avid family and joining Avid. And so we are excited to share with you that the Avid program is growing, that we have 290 students that were identified and will be interviewed. They apply, and are going to be served in the Avid elective class next school year. And so another piece of that, again, we really wanted to help you guys see some faces to some of these numbers. And so at this point, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Shawna Hunter, who's our HMS Avid Site Coordinator, and she's going to introduce another special guest that we have.
Hello, I'm so excited to introduce this next student to you. He blew me away, as she said, in they apply, they write an essay, they interview, and he touched my heart so much, and I know he's going to touch you also. So this future Avid leader, future Bronco, Anas Abdin.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be speaking with you all today. My name is Anas Abdin, and I am a fifth grader at Bear Creek Elementary. Let me tell you a little bit about me. My family recently moved from Chicago. It's been hard to get used to this place not going to life. Everything's new to me, but I'm trying to stay positive and open-minded to this new change. Most people describe me as friendly, funny, and shy, hard-working student, and I don't disagree. There are many reasons why I love to be in Avid, so I don't want to bore you, so I'll only list the important ones. The first reason why I want to be in Avid is it can help challenge me. I am a student that is determined and willing to enhance my knowledge and believe that Avid is going to help me do that. My education so far is at my level, but being a person who loves challenges, I think Avid will be great for me. My parents are immigrants that came from Somalia. My mother spent most of her life in refugee camps, which made her miss out on the opportunity to get an education. She always tells me that education is the keys to success and that we should always take advantage of the opportunity we have. Knowing that many people don't get the opportunity I have today, I make sure to take advantage of this opportunity. I believe that Avid will open more doors to opportunities for me. I am a student, I am great, I'm so grateful that I will be given the opportunity to be part of the Avid community. I promise I will not disappoint you. One thing I always keep in mind is that you can lose everything in life, your house, your money, but do you know one thing you can't lose? That's education. Everything else you can lose, but education is one thing you can't lose. That's why every second score is valuable to me. Teachers' guidance and suggestions are things I use to improve my worth ethic. My positive and hard-working attitude towards schools, every something all my teachers know. I believe I will be a great fit for Avid. Thank you.
We agree, you're a great fit for Avid. So we are so excited that he's going to be joining the Avid family. And so just, you know, in conclusion, I also want to share with you, I told you that part of what we want to do is engage all students and teachers. And so as we wrap up this year and have an opportunity to reflect and also to prepare for everything that awaits us next school year, I'm really excited to share with you that, as tired as everyone is from all of the hard work from this year, we have 73 teachers, administrators, librarians, district support staff that are preparing to engage in a common learning experience this summer around Avid, because it is, we believe in it that much. There's such a shared power in knowing what an impact the Avid College Readiness System can have on a teacher's efficacy and what they're prepared for in the classroom, and also knowing the impact that it will have on our students and the change the trajectory of some of our kiddos' lives. And so we are so excited about that. So, you know, we just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share some of these great highlights, and thank you for your continued support of Avid here in the district.
Did anyone have any questions? And before I say that, I want to ask real quick, Ben, outstanding young man, outstanding speech. Tell me, and I know you said this, but tell me again, where are you going to college? Good for you. Wish you all the luck in that. And then, young man, Anis? Anas? Are you sure you're in fifth grade? I don't think so. I don't think we've ever had someone stand up in front of us that's so well-spoken. So, great job, and I know you're going to love Heritage Middle School. You're going to be a great fit over there. You better watch out when him comes, he goes in that door. You both did an outstanding job. Do we have any questions for anyone on Avid? Wonderful presentation, thank you all very much. We will move on to the open forum portion of our meeting and turn it over to you, Jorge.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, on the agenda is the open forum section of our board meeting. Any person who is not scheduled on the agenda may address the board during the open forum by completing the request to speak form and submitting it to the Executive Director of Communications prior to the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board is restricted from discussing or taking action on items presented tonight during the open forum if the item is not listed on tonight's agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered. In addition, this is not the forum that the district has provided to raise and resolve complaints about individual employees or students. We request that persons speaking in open forum on items not on the agenda refrain from raising complaints against such individuals or personally identifying them in any way in their remarks unless it is pursuant to the district's grievance policies. Please contact the appropriate administrator to address your comments or concerns. There is generally, there is generally a three-minute time limit on individual presentations. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. The board president may extend additional time at his or her discretion or shorten the allowed time for each speaker to not less than two minutes if the speaking requests are so numerous as to hinder the orderly conduct of the board's meeting on pending business. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. We have our first speaker is Kate Burkhart. Ms. Burkhart, if you could come to the podium and say your name and address, please.
My name is Kate Burkhart. I'm a teacher resident, and then my address is 2625 Flame Leaf Drive, Grapevine. I wanted to get up and just say thank you to everybody. This will be my 20th year teaching. No joke, the hardest thing I've ever done. It is impossible to go to school and have zero kids in front of you and put a smile on your face, but the support and loyalty from all of you guys has been amazing. I came to Mr. Fingers this year with a really big idea, our seniors did, and instead of turning us down, he said, tell me, let's make it happen. And then I kind of cornered Dr. Schnels and said, I have this really big idea of this thing these kids want to do. He said, you are really going to have to think outside the box, but what can I do to help you? And it's just, it's been so hard, but you guys have all been so amazing. You have the worst day ever, not one kid turns on their camera, and you walk down to your mailbox, and you have a note from Dr. Ryan. How many teachers are in this district? And it's the day you want to give up, you get a note from the big dog, and you're like, well, it's going to be okay. Or you have things not going the right way, and Louis sneaks in the back door of the building and sticks his head in and says, how are you doing? Are you okay? What can I do? You're in the middle of a windstorm setting up for prom, and Colleen stops by and brings food, and how, what can I do? And it's just through the midst of all the craziness of this pandemic, we've had so many amazing people in our community step up. I don't know if you guys saw, but you guys, we've had prom, we've had banquets, we've had football games, we've had so many things. So many people have missed out on, and that's because of you guys. You guys fought for our kids, and it's just been amazing. The city of Grapevine, if any of you live in the city of Grapevine, if you see anybody that works for them, tell them thank you. The support and love they gave our high school seniors was amazing. The local restaurants, the city, everybody has been so amazing. The local restaurants, the city, everybody has been so amazing. And I'm so proud to be a resident. I'm so proud to have grown up here. I'm so proud of everything and it's amazing, the hardest year ever teaching. I don't think I've ever left with my bucket this full. And it's just, it's just, there's just no words to describe it. I just want to say thank you. And it, you guys have been kicked and dragged through the mud and everything else. And I feel like everything is so negative and it has been hard, but it's been great. There's lots of good relationships have been built in these classrooms. We live in a great community, you guys. We have a great stuff going on. Just be thankful and thank you, you guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fingers. You're never allowed to start. I, Alex and I started, he started four years ago and got extremely sick. And it was a rough year and then this year, and he talked about grit. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to everybody in our community. Thank you for all your support. It's been a hard year, but you guys, amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Our next speaker is Ms. Rachel Abel. Ms. Abel, you could come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Abel and my address is twenty-seven sixteen Seven Shire Court in Grapevine. Good evening, trustees and Dr. Ryan. And yes, Kate, wonderful, wonderful words. There's been some great incredible things happening in our district, um, this year despite the pandemic. One thing that I wanted to bring up to tonight is something that I think we can improve on. Tonight, I would like to discuss discipline in our schools. Page five of the GCISD Student Code of Conduct states disciplinary action shall draw on the professional judgment of teachers and administrators. Through a series of events this year, I discovered that this statement is misleading in our community. Currently, Grapevine High School and Colleyville Heritage High School share a secret discipline matrix that our children are measured against when they are receiving an office referral for behavioral matters. The stated purpose of this discipline chart is to provide consistency between the high schools when administering punishment to students. This chart lists the school rules and the consequences that a student will receive when the rule is broken. If this discipline chart is being used to judge our children, the district, excuse me, the district must make parents aware of this and students aware of this. Between the months of November and February, I requested through my Level One, Two, and Three grievance hearings that this document be published in the Student Code of Conduct and Parent Handbook. The high school, the district, and the school board all denied my request. It deeply concerns me that our school district would deny parents and students transparency and the disciplining of our students, our children. Tonight, in this public forum, I request two things. That this discipline matrix be published in the Student Code of Conduct and Parent Handbook. We provide our children with educational objectives and consequences. We should do the very same with behavioral objectives and consequences. Why would we hide their, why would we hide this from them? We must be transparent and make all parties accountable. And two, I request that an annual discipline board comprised of staff, parents, and students be empaneled to review the consequences listed on that matrix. Stakeholders should be involved to make sure the punishments are in line with today's climate and culture in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. The next speaker is Lonnie Lehman. Lori Lehman. Will you say your name?
Laura Lehman.
Oh, Laura Lehman, alright.
Twelve Brighterwood North, Colleyville. First of all, I just wanted to say I feel so honored to speak this evening. I've been sitting here just blown away by all of the students that came, the teachers that have principals that I, you know, it's just, I, I am just very impressed, so I just wanted to share that first. I am a parent of two boys. I have an older son who's a teen enrolled in special education. Uh, my other son is enrolled in general education. He's a third grader. When moving to Texas five years ago, I was sold on GCISD after I had the opportunity to visit Bransford Elementary. Honestly, I literally cried happy tears, called my real estate agent and said, I want to stay in BCISD after having visited six other school districts around the DFW area and after looking at thirty-two homes. I can only speak for myself, but I'm pleased to say that, um, as I have advocated for my son, who is physically intellectually developmentally disabled and is medically complex, that when I have had ARDS, I, we have lived out of state and the ARDS that I have had have been very non-contemptious. I have had a very good ARD team throughout the time that we've been here. And just recently went through an ARD this week that I was not happy about something, but we worked it out very, very quickly. I can only say that, or I can attest that GCISD is doing the right things by following the laws of the Individuals for Disabilities Education Act and FACE, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education. I am grateful for the education that both of my boys have been receiving. And I appreciate that GCISD works very hard to ensure that all students are educated. Not long ago, I attended a school candidate forum or trustee forum and learned that fifty-nine different languages are spoken in our district. This blew me away and I, I was delighted to learn that. I personally support a diverse group of people and students. And I'm happy to learn that they're, uh, in this district, they're all getting the education they need and deserve. GCISD is not perfect, but I do know that GCISD listens to parents' concerns and takes concerns and education very seriously. I think if anyone has any issue with diversity and inclusion, it is a time, it's time to take a hard look in the mirror, be honest with oneself, and admit why one may see an issue with that at all. God created people from all over the world and whether, or whether some people like it or not, DFW cities are expanding and include people of color of different backgrounds, religions, ethnicities, abilities, and disabilities. Uh, I appreciate that learning among a diverse group of students is accepted within our school district and all of my children are being embraced. We are GCISD, a nonpartisan educational institution serving all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The next speaker is Mr. Carl Cobal. You could come to the podium, say your name and address. And I would like to remind the speakers, we have a timer around that corner of three minutes. So just going to make sure that you guys see it. I know it's kind of high weather, so, um, just to let you know. Go ahead, you can start.
My name is Carl Cobal. Um, I live at three-three-two-seven Wintergreen Terrace in Grapevine. Um, I've lived in the district for over thirty years. Wife is here as well. Two children that have gone through the district. I have a twenty-one-year-old daughter, T. She graduated from I University Prep. Um, she had a rather circuitous career. She was in GSE through seventh grade, eighth grade. She went to the Texas Academy of Music, uh, T. Well, sorry, Fort Worth Academy of Fine Arts. Um, it's been a while. Uh, and then she got into Tams at the University of North Texas. I was there for a year, realized that wasn't the best fit for her and then came back to finish her school at I University Prep. And that was absolutely the best thing that could happen for her and that was an awesome segue to her getting a UT. Um, my son is seventeen and his big thing for school has been STEM program. Uh, he started in, uh, fourth grade at Cannon and he's now a junior and it is perfect for him. So I just want to say as a taxpayer in the district, I'm astounded and what, you know, love the fact that, um, we invest our resources on these great programs. They are, uh, nobody likes paying taxes, but when it's being spent on such excellent programs and it's great outcomes, um, I'm more than happy to see my taxes spent that way. Um, and I, I just looked at the Wikipedia page for the district and saw that the district has a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. That is phenomenal. I think the teachers, the administrators, and the board members are the, you know, should take great pride in those statistics. So I want to say, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carl. Our next speaker is Mr. Alex Howard. Mr. Howard, you could, oh, Mrs. Howard, Howard. You could come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Alex Alexandra Howard, uh, fifty-eight oh-two Meadow Hill Drive in Colleyville. This is more of a question for the board here and I'm ra- rather new to the whole, um, getting involved. But over the last several months, a lot of things have concerned me. I've spoken on, at a couple of the meetings that have all been virtual. So I really appreciate you guys opening it back up to being in person tonight. I've spoken about my feelings around the masks and whether it's optional or not, so I appreciate being heard. My topic tonight or question is around critical race theory. So, you know, in open record request, I found a course called A Taste of Theory at GHS that is being co-taught by an ELA teacher named Haley Taylor. And I understand, or I've heard that this in fact is not happening in our schools. So it's a little, I'm a little conflicted or concerned as to why we would be having that. And the, the, the course is called A Taste of Theory. So like slide thirty-three got into more of the critical race piece. And I have understood that Dr. Ryan has said we aren't doing this in our district. But in fact, we have seen where teachers are getting trained on how to do this. And I think the frustration I feel as a parent is I feel like social issues should be taken up at home with the parents. I mean, I, we moved here for the schools as well. We've lived here for seven years and made a conscious conscientious choice for this district to get a great education. But I feel like over the last year, and of course, of course, certainly the social issues that are out there today are much different than they were years ago. But I just feel like the line is getting a little blurry and I just, I want to understand. And I don't know, I don't, I'm guessing you guys don't produce or provide an answer tonight. But I'd like to understand, what is the role? What do you all see as the role of our teachers in educating our students about social issues? I mean, how, how do we have that conversation? Is that, and just because I'm new to the process, do I leave the question here and you guys come back with a response at some point? Or how does it work?
You address us tonight.
Okay.
And give us your concerns.
Okay.
And then someone from the district will definitely get with you and kind of the chain, you will meet with them or telephone or whatever you'd prefer.
Okay.
And have your answers, your questions answered.
Okay, great. I would say it's a very, a big, very big concern for my husband and I. We have a nine, a, a child that's going into seventh next year and a child going into fourth. And we're very invested in staying here the rest of our kids' life, our kids' school education, sorry, kicking my words out, for the rest of their education before they go off to college. But I thank you, I, I would appreciate some perspective on that. And I would certainly hope you guys would give a strong consideration to not having that anywhere in the curriculum for our, our kids. I mean, let the parents, please, parent and educate them on the social issues as they see fit in their own homes. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Our next speaker is Stetson Clark. Mr. Clark, you could come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Stetson Clark. I live at thirty-four ten Spring Tree Drive in Grapevine, Texas. Um, I have a daughter who's just about to finish first grade. I have an eager soon-to-be kindergartner, two other boys that'll be coming up through this district. When we moved to Texas five years ago, we chose GCISD based on the quality of the education that, that preceded it. When we moved in, I was tasked with raising four young kids. And as they approached school age, I noticed some troubling trends in GCISD. I've recently been made aware of some disturbing material, disturbing material made available in our district on the app BrainPop. The video seeks to provide justification for the violent and destructive riots that took place across our country last summer. I was later made aware that many of the administrators and leadership in our district also advocated for this movement and the violence perpetrated by them. This is highly inappropriate. And to think that current administrators would show solidarity with this destruction of American history, this anti-white and anti-family agenda is disgusting. If the board was aware of this material and its views of the administration hires, it is unacceptable. These racist and anti-American values have no place in our community. If the board did not know about these, this material, I challenge you to remove this content. BrainPop and any other apps promote this from student access and do not renew contracts with these organizations for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year school year with any companies that provide this material. Also challenge you to censure and have frank discussions with your administrators, the destructive nature of this material, the way it can be handled and students aren't made to feel unwelcome at their schools. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clark. Our next, next speaker is Kelsey Rodriguez. And I'm sure I can get that last name correctly. Kelsey Rodriguez. So Ms. Rodriguez, you could come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Hi, everybody. I am Kelsey Rodriguez. I live at five-one-three Woodbrier Lane in Colleyville. And, um, y'all first heard from me in March when I spoke virtually. I talked about the TEA Senate bill and I also told you who Jesus Christ did. Last month, I told you that I would happily put on a mask to be part of my children's education at school. Today, I'm here to tell you that I have been putting on a mask every week since January to get inside the building and be by myself in a room and help the teachers however I can with whatever work they put down there. So, um, as you know, Teacher Appreciation Week was earlier this month and there was a luncheon in the library. And I was in there and much to my pleasant surprise, in walks my son's teacher. And it's like spotting a celebrity for me. I was so excited. I get to meet my son's teacher in person. And so respecting the six feet distance, I go up to her and I say, hey, Ms. so-and-so, I'm Kelsey Rodriguez, I'm Phillip's mom. And her response to me is going to make you laugh. She said, I'm not Ms. so-and-so. That was embarrassing. But I want you to think about what that means. It's May and I don't know what my son's teacher looks like. And that hurts. And so much of these meetings are talking about how well we're doing. This year was hard. And I wish that more time had been spent making a bad situation better and maybe thinking about how we could foster parent-teacher relationships so that May comes around and I know what my son's teacher looks like. I'm really looking forward to the fall. I know it's going to be a lot better. And if you want to find me, I will be in my children's classroom volunteering and soaking up every single minute of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Braxton Russell. You could come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
I'm Braxton Russell. I live at eighteen oh-five, sorry, Camden Green, Colleyville, Texas. Good evening, parents, board members, and any fellow students here tonight. For those who do not know me, my name is Braxton Russell. I am a senior from Grapevine High School. First off, I want to thank the board members for allowing me to come up here tonight and speak at this public forum. Attending Grapevine High School the past four years has been a significant blessing in my life. I can't imagine, imagine going anywhere else for high school. Um, GCISD has done a fantastic job at offering a wide variety of subjects to learn and at the highest level possible in high school. I have great faith that this level of dedication to the students will continue on. I have taken over fifteen AP classes the past four years and I feel And I feel like this gives me the right to have an opinion on how well the AP program is. And I can, I would strongly argue that GCISD has one of the best AP programs in the state. And I can also confidently say that because of my GCISD education that I feel very prepared for my next chapter away at college. I want to say thank you to all the GCISD teachers who have done a fantastic job during such an uncertain school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Braxton. Our last speaker is Mindy Russell. You could come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yes. Mindy Russell, 1805 Camden Green. Dr. Ryan, board trustees, parents, and community members. Each of us is a storybook, and I suspect that this past year is a chapter in all of our lives that we will never forget. I wanted to take a moment to publicly express my thank you to the board, the teachers, all of the staff administrators, and especially the school nurses. Navigating this past year has been nothing short of a Herculean effort. While we saw many schools around the country shut down entirely and say, no, we can't do that. In our district, we saw efforts made to keep our kids learning either via remote or in school and a positive approach of how can we make this happen in response to the obstacles that faced us. While some voices in the community complain, I as a mother, I'm grateful for the positive attitudes that I saw from the children in my home as well as their friends. I saw kids become creative, explore new activities, and learn new hobbies. I witnessed new study habits and organizational skills develop in my son. And, and, and an incredible love for books continue to grow in my younger child. I am one who loves sports, and I am thankful to the coaches who made it possible for our student athletes to continue playing and participating in the sports that they love. GCISD is a fantastic school district. While we had some hiccups in my son's younger years, those hiccups turned into a learning period and one of the greatest blessings. I've said it many times, our school district isn't perfect, but it's pretty darn great. As a mother, I am at peace sending my child off to college. While I will miss him dearly, I know that he and his fellow classmates are far better prepared for the rigors of college life than most students due in part to their GCISD education. A theme at the university that he will be attending is the world is our campus. In many ways, he has already experienced this, and I am so grateful for that as I feel it has contributed to making him the well-rounded young man that he is. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you do for our students. It hasn't gone unnoticed by this mom. To use your hashtag, we are GCISD. Thank you.
That concludes our open forum. Thank you all that came in person to speak tonight. And thank you for getting out in the rainy weather. We will move on to our report to the superintendent. Item A is the health update for the 2020-2021 school year.
Since August, we've been bringing you as this first item of the school board meetings. And so we have Nurse Amy here in person. And she's probably celebrating, this is going to be our last item A update unless something happens in between now and August. So, Amy, thank you for all of your work over the year. It's been incredible. Thank you for bringing this information to the board this evening. I'll turn it over to you.
I might need a little assistance.
Help is on the way.
I thought you were gonna give the avid. It was, it was so good, we're gonna do it again.
Okay, um, yeah, I feel like it's ninth verse, same as the verse. So again, Tarrant County metrics, as of, oh my goodness, I misspell May. Forgive me. That really, that really just kind of tops off this whole year. We're just gonna add an L to the end of May. So the positivity rate, we've been waiting for it to go down and for all year less than 10. And ideally, it's less than five. And so I'm happy to report that today, May 24th, it is now at 4%. So we finally made it to the ideal metric for safer in-person learning. So metric number two and number five go hand in hand. And again, you can see from January, we've just had continuing dropping numbers that are cases per week. They really wanted them less than 2,000, which we've been there for a long, long time and four weeks of stable declining case counts, which again, we've been there for quite some time. And so last week, May 22nd, they had 381 cases for the week in Tarrant County. And so when you look at 2.1, I think 2.1 million people in Tarrant County, that's also just a really great goal and, and metric that we've met. The CLI is now down to 1%. Flu is now at 4%. So they've kind of traded places. And so they're seeing more flu in the ER than they are COVID-like illnesses, which is really nice. And April is 2%. It's continuing to decline. It's down to one as of today. Number four, percentage of occupied hospital beds, that continues to decline as well. But it's a little bit slower. And April was 3%, and today it's 2.69%. So that's still kind of hanging on just a little bit, and I keep watching that one. But for the most part, it's well under where they want it, which is 10%. So again, the metrics are just continuing to go in a direction that is very, very good and stable. As far as the testing center, we have had lower and lower numbers of positive students and staff. It looks like the week of 4/26, we kind of had a little bit of an uptick. And then today, we actually had six positive cases in the district. So we're seeing just a little bit of an uptick in the district, nothing that I'm overly concerned about. Just something that we're just gonna be watching again, that safety net's gonna be in place with contact tracing and just kind of watching those numbers really, really close. And the testing center is a great way to, to do that so that we can capture those. Because three of those came out of the testing center today. This is the COVID-19 vaccine rates from the Department of State Health Services website. And as you can see, Tarrant County, we're region 23. And so overall, the percentage of population over 65 is 71%. So at least one dose, two doses. And so, I mean, you know, we're looking pretty good as far as fully vaccinated, as far as Tarrant County goes. And really, you know, when you look at percentage of population 12 plus fully vaccinated is around 40. I'm gonna go and round up. I like rounding up with math. It looks better. 40%. When you look at the district, we are creeping up in our numbers. Nothing leaps and bounds. But people with one dose is 32.8%, and those with two doses is at 30.6, which is up a couple of points of a percentage. And so the reason there's a difference in those is some of those are Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so they'll never have that second dose. And so that's why there's always gonna be just a little bit of difference because a certain percentage of our staff receive Johnson &amp; Johnson. And really, that's it, unless y'all have questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? You have some, sorry.
So, is it possible that we have a higher vaccination rate among employees because of lack of reporting or, because it looks, it doesn't look, I mean, it looks low to me. So I just want to know.
Right, absolutely. And so when, when we ask people to voluntarily give us their vaccine records, you know, it's definitely a personal decision to do that. And we have some that have, you know, just willingly shared. And then I think others, you know, they're very private. They like, they like their privacy. And their vaccines are one of those. And so there's nothing that says that they have to. And so I do think we probably are a little bit higher, but I don't have that guaranteed on paper.
And also, I know we're gonna go mask optional next week. And then, of course, the fall, if things work out in the summer. So how, what, what is your expectation on, on the August experiment going mask optional? What are your expectation on this?
Well, you know, I really wish I had a crystal ball, and I really wish I was able to, you know, always be right. Because if I, if it were my world, we would, we would go back to the way it was. And we wouldn't have masks. We really wouldn't have protocols. I do think now that, now that we have COVID in our world, it just like we have flu numbers that go up, and we see a huge number, not a huge number, we see a number of children go home in the fall. You know, flu goes up, and then it starts getting hot and flu comes back down. I think we're gonna see an ebb and flow of COVID. And, but we don't know what that looks like because I, I wouldn't think that a virus would blast Texas heat. And yet it did last year. So we don't know what the season of COVID's gonna look like and when it's gonna peak and when it's not. So I do kind of just see that there's, we're gonna find out what season it is. And it could be that we need, you know, some protection in place for our youngest, you know, students who aren't vaccinated and don't have an opportunity to be vaccinated. And so there may be a need for some protocols. And then as we come out of the season that we're not sure about yet, those go away. Just like with flu, we, we talk more and more about hand washing with kids. When flu season starts going up, we talk about hand washing, covering your cough, sneezing into your elbow, all those things. And that's, you know, but in August and September, we're not as heavy on that. But when it starts getting October, November, we start talking to kids about that more and more. So I see it as an ebb and flow.
So are you recommending, for example, teachers, you know, some people that don't want to tell us if they, they got the vaccine or not, would you recommend teachers that did not get vaccine, the vaccine, when they come back in August to wear masks or not?
I think it's a personal choice. I think it depends on who they are and their underlying health conditions, how comfortable they are. And everybody is different. I, I mean, I, I am vaccinated, and so therefore I am ready to, I'm ready to test it. I'm ready to test the waters. I'm ready not to wear a mask. I'm ready to see what the vaccine can do. The efficacy of it is being proven very well. And so I'm, I'm ready to take it for a spin.
Okay.
And, and you know, you, you say that they'll have the choice. And I know throughout, I've, I have visited with some teachers and, and they have said they're gonna come back with a mask because they'll have a parent at home they're taking care of. And they love the fact that they never got sick. They didn't get strep throat. They didn't get the flu. They didn't get, and so even though they've had the vaccine, they were gonna continue wearing a mask because they love the fact they never got sick. So I think everybody's got their.
And I, I never thought about this. I was talking to my son Julian about this. It's like, so now we know if somebody in the house gets sick, everybody just wears a mask. And I never even thought about that, but that's kind of the way you do it now to keep everybody else protected.
Or make them wear a mask and you don't.
This mean Diane's gonna have to readjust her, you know, numbers for teachers actually being.
Any other questions for Amy? Do you have a question?
Yeah. So does the county break out the age vaccination any greater than 65 plus versus 12 plus?
The county does not, and the Department of State Health Services. I could probably call and, and try to get those numbers for an update for you, but they're not.
Just curious, so that's all.
Yeah, I could totally ask.
Amy, do you know, how was our vaccine clinic? How did it go? I mean, I know.
We were the host, so we were kind of the geographical location for CoverTech to come in and administer those vaccines to people in the community and our, you know, families. And we had 73 take that opportunity. And then we will repeat that again on June 3rd. Later this week, I'll be sending out another signup genius for those that had the first one to then sign up for the second one. And the nurses kind of did hurting and, you know, watching of people after. And so they just did kind of, you know, just help with paperwork and things like that. And it worked out very well. They were very quick, very professional.
Amy, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership throughout this entire school year and your calm leadership. It may not have been calm with the camera off or you're in your, in your office, but you sure did come across as a wonderful leader through this crisis. And I just want you to know, we appreciate you for that. And it just gave us a, a wonderful feel that, that we had someone with the knowledge that was leading us through this. So I just want you to know, you're appreciated.
Thank you, Amy.
We'll move on to item B, Act to Schedule a Public Meeting to Discuss Budget and Proposed Tax Rate.
Yes, as part of the truth and taxation process, the board must schedule a public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate. The public meeting must take place before the tax rate can be adopted. And the school district tops its budget, adopts its budget according to its fiscal year. But the first must publish a notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate and local newspaper at least 10 days prior to the meeting, no earlier than 30 days prior to the meeting. Notices also to include proposed tax rate information. For publication purposes, the proposed 2021 tax rate be shown as $1.3031 or 1.3031, the combined rate of .9664 for maintenance and operations and .3367 debt services. Tax rate's the same as the prior year and does not include any possible changes from the legislative session. And the school board may adopt a budget and tax rate after the public meeting, or the board may adopt the budget and wait to adopt the tax rate at a later date. In June, the board will be asked to adopt the budget for 2021 and 2022 budget year. Tax rate will be adopted in August or September. Recommendations for the Board Trustees to Schedule a Public Meeting to Discuss the Budget and Proposed Tax Rate on June 21st, 2021, to be held at the Boardroom in the GCISD Administration Building, 3051 Ira E. Woods Avenue, Grapevine, Texas. The proposed tax rate for publication will be shown as 1.3031.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you. Becky, do I have a second? Louis, thank you. A second. Do, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to item C, Act on the Amended Request for Hybrid Instruction During District Scheduled Testing Days for K Through 8 Students. The waiver during, the student waiver during 2020-2021.
Now, these next few items are waivers that we submit to TA, TEA yearly. And so this first one is for scheduled testing days. Dr. Snatch, you want to take us through this for?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Board, if you'll remember, recall back in the March meeting, you approved this original waiver that allowed us to, basically, for these five testing dates, the students that weren't testing were allowed to go remote so that we could minimize the traffic in the buildings and we could safely test those students. On the April 6 administration, TEA's testing platform, there were some technical difficulties. And so we were not able to test that day. So we had to move that testing date to April 13th, a week away. So we were able to successfully test on the 13th. This waiver's basically replacing that April 6 date with April 13th. And so this is an amendment to the original waiver that you guys approved back in March.
Thank you, Dr. Snatch. Recommendations for the Board Trustees to Approve the District to Submit an Amended Request for Hybrid Instruction During District Scheduled Testing Days for K Through 8 Students Waiver.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I make a motion to approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Cole. In a second. Casey, a second. Do I have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries 7-0. Item D, Act on the Request for Staff Development, 2100 Minutes Waiver.
Yes, again, this is another TEA waiver. So for staff development, I'll ask Dr. Snatch to take us through this one as well.
Yes, and so this is just a standard waiver that we've also, you've approved in the past. This is for the 2122 school year. It allows us to allocate 2,100 minutes of our instructional time towards professional development. We still get credit in the 75,600 minutes that are required in the school year. But this allows us to embed important professional learning opportunities for our teachers during that school year. And so some typically will have like an early release or will have just staff development, development days in the calendar already built in. So that's what this 2100 staff development minute waiver is for.
Thank you, Dr. Snatch. Recommendations for the Board Trustees to Approve the Request for Staff Development, 2100 Minutes Waiver. Once approved, the waiver remains in place for the 2021-22 school year.
I have a motion for a recommendation. Mindy, maybe accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation. Thank you, Mindy. In a second. Casey, a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to item E, Act on the Waiver for Accelerated Instruction Timeline.
Yes, again, this is part of the Student Success Initiative. Dr. Snatch, you want to take us through this waiver?
Yes, sir. So again, this is a pretty traditional waiver in which we are required for the, the SSI students to provide accelerated instruction after each administration for the second, third administration. to provide accelerated instruction after each administration for the second, third administration. What this allows us to do is basically after that third administration, the the fifth and eighth graders take that in June, in mid-June. They'll take that third administration. For those students that aren't successful in that third administration, it allows us to now provide that accelerated instruction in the first six weeks of the of the next school year instead of keeping them all summer, basically. It allows the students to have a summer. So we're able to provide that accelerated instruction on the front end of that school year when they return. And so this waiver is for three years. It it includes this year because due to the pandemic, there are no second, third administrations for STAR. And so we will provide that accelerated instruction at the start of the 21 school year here in a few months. And so it also includes the 2122 school year as well as the 2223 school year. So it is for the current year as well, the 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 next two years.
Thank you, Dr. Schnatz. Recommendation for the board trustees to approve the request for a waiver of the accelerated instruction time effective for the 2021, 2020 to 2021, 2021 to 2022, and the 2022 to 2023 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Mindy?
I may do accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy, a second. Louis, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Item F. Act on the expedited waiver for the limitation of foreign exchange students.
Yes, this is a another one that we ask TEA to waive each year. And Dr. Schnatz, I'll allow you to take it through.
Yeah, this is Dr. Gropples, but I'll try to give them a little kickstart. So basically, what's that? Yeah, well, I will, and then I'll kick it to you. So just sit tight. So basically, this is a an annual waiver that we bring to you guys that allows us to basically welcome foreign exchange students here in our district. But this waiver basically says that that number of foreign exchange students will not go below five. And so we love having foreign exchange students here in GCSD. However, we it it is a big task that we we love and embrace. But it's something that we try to keep that number to five because it is such a big responsibility to get them to be assimilated into our culture here at Grapevine High School and Colville Heritage, to get them in a nice and in the right home and just allow them to embrace all the the opportunities at their respective schools. So how to do, Dr. Groppel? Okay, all right. All right.
Anything to add, Dr. Groppel?
Mas remanos.
No, that 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 it it is for a three-year waiver. It would cover us for the next three school years. As Dr. Schnatz said, it it allows us to take in students. There's a lot of different foreign exchange agencies. This allows us to have guidelines and stipulations to make sure the kids coming to us are set up for success in in an American school system.
Thank you, Dr. Groppel. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the expedited waiver for the limitation of foreign exchange students to five per high school campus and abide by the GCSD Foreign Exchange Program Guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion? Louis? Thank you, Louis, in a second. Jorge, thank you. Any questions? Nope, seeing none. Did you have a question? I'm sorry. Nope. Oh. You're ahead of the, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0.
No, Diane Mooney will will take that. Thank you, Diane.
We'll move on to item G. Act on the District of Innovation Amendment.
So these next two items are connected. And I'll allow Diane to kind of take us through both of them. First, the District of Innovation Amendment, which has to be done in order for the next item to be able to be even really considered. So Diane.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. House Bill 1842, passed during the 84th legislative session, provides the opportunity for Texas Public Schools to pursue the designation of District of Innovation. This allows school districts to obtain exemptions from certain provisions of the Texas Education Code that would allow more flexibility and local control for innovative programming. On February 27, 2017, the GCSD DOI was approved by the board. But the law also allows the DOI plan to be amended at any time to add any exemptions. The district's current health plan is the State Teacher Retirement System Health Plan. And at this time, due to Texas Education Code, Section 22.004, the district is not allowed to offer any alternative health plan because we are a part of the state plan. However, we can amend our DOI to include this exemption from Section 22.004. And that would allow us to offer an alternative health plan. And so that is what we are recommending tonight. By law, the DOI amendment must also be presented to and approved by the District Excellence Committee. This was presented and approved on May 11th. So the next step is to receive board consideration. An approval of this amendment does not require the district to offer an alternative health plan, but it just provides us the local control and flexibility to do so if if we choose to. So that is the first part.
Thank you, Diane. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the amendment to the District of Innovation Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I may do accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy, in a second. Becky? Second?
Second, yeah, Becky.
Questions?
Well, um, there we go. So were there any questions from the DEC? And I I think one thing I really want to make sure that we get out there is because particularly when this first came up, that DOIs could do this. I think there was some fear out there in in the whole world, not not necessarily specifically GCSD, but that somehow this meant, oh, my gosh, the district isn't going to offer a health plan. And that's not the case, that hopefully with this, we'll be able to offer something that's a little bit better. And so I was curious what exactly, you know, some of the feedback was from the DEC meeting.
Yeah, Becky, I would say probably the most common question we heard was, okay, does this now remove us from TRS and inactive care and those options? And it does not. This basically just adds another option or two to the table for for our employees to consider and their families. And so it's, you know, peace of mind there, no. It it's going to be what we currently have plus some additional options.
In that same vein, then, does does that mean we might possibly have the ability to offer multiple plans that people could pick from? Or are we still going to kind of have to go with one thing?
So when this first came up last year, there was really only one option. And it's, there's a couple of service centers that had put some consortiums together to come up with a plan. And so really, last year, the the only option, other option we had did not, I mean, the benefits just weren't what we would want to offer our employees. So when it came up again, we had two options, the one from last year, and then we have another one with Region 12, which is the one that we're looking at approving. So it, when I say options, there's going to be, you can still do TRS, and there's several plans under TRS. And also, under the alternative plan, there's two options. There's one that's very similar to the current HD. And then there's also one that's very similar to the the primary.
Somebody else had questions? Was it you, Jorge?
I just want to, yeah. So are we planning to, if we get into plans that we might consider offering? Is that for the August full year? Or is that for?
Our benefits start September 1.
So that will be that from now until then, we will look at options.
Yes, our open enrollment is typically starts mid-July.
Okay.
Any other questions? None, and all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to H, which is Act on the Education Service Center, Region 12, Universal Benefits Consortium, Interlocal Agreement Resolution and Agreement.
Yes, so this was, this is what Diane was just was just mentioning about about the options that we would like to consider for our employees. Diane, would you explain that a little bit further, please?
Yes, so this is the the option that we have chosen to move forward with if we choose to do so. Because now that the DOI has been amended, we are in a position to be able to do this. This plan that we're recommending tonight, it's with the service center. So in order to join the consortium, we just need to approve this interlocal agreement. One thing I want to mention about this plan is that it is a level funded plan, which means we will never pay more in to this plan than the predetermined monthly premium. So it's not a self-insured plan. We do not take on any of that risk. So the savings, and I. Diane, did they get a copy of the attachments, the questions? I had provided, I had provided a, yeah. I provided a comparison that kind of shows what the savings would would be under this plan. But one thing I I want to point out is that we will not know what the TRS premiums are until about the first week of June. The last TRS meeting, it was, with all the discussions, it was very clear that there's probably going to be increases in the TRS premiums. And so for this comparison purposes, to show a savings, we went ahead and increased the TRS premiums by 5% and compared it to the the pricing we got on the UBC plan. And the savings would be between 360 and 540 per year, just depending on whether you're just children only or or you have your family just. But that was the range of savings. If the TRS premiums go up more than 5%, that savings is going to become larger because the pricing for the UBC plan is set. I mean, that's what we got. And so that's that's why tonight, if we go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement, we will be in a good position when those TRS premiums are announced to know whether or not it's something we want to move forward with. And another point I want to make on the UBC plan is that it does require 55% of employees who participate in a health plan to select UBC. And I I think if we have, can have a plan that shows savings, I don't know that we'll have an issue getting the 55%.
So I'll also.
Just like the DOI, just like the DOI, I forgot about this, just like the DOI amendment, just because it's approved tonight does not necessarily mean we have to move forward. So it just puts us in a in a place to move forward quickly once those premiums are announced.
Thank you, that's that's what I was going to add. Thank you, Diane. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the ESC Region 12 Universal Benefits Consortium Interlocal Agreement Resolution and Agreement pending legal review.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the, Casey?
I move to accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Casey, in a second. Colleen? Thank you, Colleen. Any questions?
Yeah, so Diane, I guess I kind of jumped the gun with my previous question. I just want to make sure. So I know we we went out and we we got some proposals. Is there a possible, twofold? Number one, is there a possibility that we would have other options presented to us? Or is this kind of it? And then number two, does this set us, I mean, is the timeline going to work okay as far as Gemma going out with hiring and also our teachers as they're gearing up for this next school year?
Well, we will know in June. And they, this plan can work with our current hub and get everything loaded. So I mean, there's not going to be a problem with that because we will have, I mean, we start open enrollment July 15th. So we would have some time to get it all set up.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0.
I'd like to say thank you to Diane for the work just to get us to this point. It's been a lot of extra work to try to help our employees. And this is one option that we'll we'll be able to hopefully follow through on. So thank you, Diane.
Move on to item I. Act on donation from Grapevine Elementary School.
These next two items are donations from our elementaries. The first one is from Grapevine Elementary School, scheduled to have a new playground equipment installed this summer through the 2016 bond program. And the GESPTA is donating $18,155 to provide four additional pieces of playground equipment and one bench in addition to the equipment provided by the district. The recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of $18,155 from Grapevine Elementary School PTA.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion?
I may do accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
In a second, Casey. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment. I know they have worked so hard to raise those funds, and that's a lot of PTA man hours. So congratulations to Grapevine Elementary.
All those in favor of the donation? Motion carries 7-0. Move on to item J. Act on donation from Glen Hope Elementary.
Item J is also incredible donation from Glen Hope. It's the PTA is donating $68,048 to purchase a metal and fabric shade structure for the existing playground to protect students from excessive heat. The donation will cover the following: cost of equipment, installation, removal and disposal, the existing chain climber and the deck triangle, and the cost of engineered drawings and performance and payment bonds. So the recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of $68,048 from Glen Hope Elementary School PTA to purchase a metal and fabric shade structure for the existing playground.
We're having a fight over who's going to make this motion. Who's going to make the motion?
I move to approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Kate.
I second that.
Thank you, Casey. It really is. We all get to vote on it. Any questions or? Yep. Any questions?
Way to go, PTA.
All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. I just like to know, I'm just curious, how many years? Is that just a one year of 68,000 Glen Hope parents? Or is that a multiple years?
It's it's multiple years.
Oh, you four, five? Regardless, I just was curious. That both schools. This is just what, you know, what we say. We, it it, it takes all of us. And this is just a perfect example of how it just takes the all of us together. We are a community. Just amazing. So just thank you to all the PTAs. This is a lot of fundraising, a lot of money. Move on to item K. Authorize the superintendent to approve the sign change order number two for multi-campus renovations to Lee Lewis Construction, Inc. To remove the block walls and to build the new walls in the 300 corridor of Grapevine High School.
Yes, we talked to the board about this, a particular project for several months in a row. Paula, would you like to add anything before the recommendation?
Sure, Dr. Ryan. Just a little bit on the background there with the expansive soils that we have. It's not unusual for us to see shifting, especially with a stacked block, which was constructed, it appears, a little over 35 years ago. Grapevine High School is a small addition. And it is an area that the district has been monitoring. But we saw some more significant changes in this particular year. Invited the structural engineers to come out and take a closer look at it, as you know. And because it's been repaired in the past, or you can tell that mortar joints have been repaired in the past and things of that nature. And due to the amount of change that they have seen basically in the course of this past year, the recommendation was that those come down and be rebuilt with something that can obviously handle movement a little bit greater because it, we're going to always see the expansive soils cause our foundations to move in this area and and most of the North Texas area. So for that reason, you have this recommendation. We're on a very narrow timeframe. As you know, Huckabee, I mean, this came pretty quickly. They are putting together the construction documents, which will hopefully arrive to Lee Lewis to acquire subcontractor proposals on June 4th. That's the same time it goes to the City of Grapevine for their plan review. And they have agreed to provide Huckabee with an expedited plan review of those plans. For that reason, we need to be able to approve the change order that Lee Lewis brings forward so that they can begin work in July. Lee Lewis estimates it's going to take about eight weeks. My experience and intuition tells me it's going to last a little bit longer than that. And I I prepared Dr. Fingers or Alex for the fact that this will probably last a little bit after Labor Day. It is at least a small corridor that shouldn't impact too much as far as the campus is concerned. But we want to continue working while school begins in the fall. And that should be really the final, you know, the finishing pieces, not the major. you know, the finishing pieces, not the major demolition or anything like that that obviously occurs at the beginning of the process. You have in your write-up kind of what's involved with that plan. Part of it is to raise the center of the 300 hall floor, which is where they see some sinking taking place. It is a few inches lower than the adjacent hallways, which were constructed at some other point in time, not necessarily at that same time. What was around there was the exterior with lockers and basically an outdoor courtyard type of area for those lockers. So I think that's probably enough. The scope of dollars is included there in terms of the opinion of probable cost. And that's what we would be targeting, looking for from Lee Lewis. So I'm asking that you give Dr. Ryan the authority to sign and approve that change order the minute that they have it prepared and ready so that there's no delay and they can immediately sign subcontractors and order materials to get ready in July. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the board trustees to authorize Dr. Ryan to approve and sign change order number two for multi-campus renovations to Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated to remove and rebuild the 300 corridor walls at Grapevine High School.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation, Louis? Thank you, Louis. In a second. Casey?
Thank you very much.
Any questions? See you in none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item L, Act on Appropriations of 2005 and 2011 Bond Surplus for capital improvements identified during the annual budget process.
Yes, Paula, can you take us through this one as well, please?
Yes, be happy to. So as you know, Diane mentioned to you at the last board meeting, during the annual budget process, departments bring forward capital needs that they have. Due to the limitations of our operating budget, we certainly recommend that we use surplus bond funds in order to take care of some of these needs. I provided in the packet, again, a recap of the items that we're talking about funding with the amount that's been requested. Several of these items were provided for in the 2016 bond and those items or those monies for those line items have been spent. So in order to continue those services is the reason for this request. Many of those are technology related and Kyle will explain those in a moment to you. Some of the other items on the list aren't new items that either facilitate online learning or meetings of the sort or address some sort of a safety aspect. I gave you two examples in the packet. One of those was hardware and software that would allow our bus drivers and transportation department to take attendance on the buses. As you can see, that provides another level of safety, security for our students knowing for sure and immediately who's on board and where they've exited the bus, which is at sometimes very critical to know as quickly as possible. And then another example of a new item was obviously the introduction of WebEx into our school district with the pandemic. And we see the value in continuing to make use of that for meetings and other purposes related to online school. So those were just a couple of the examples when I said safety and/or new items, as well as continuing services that originally provided in the 16 bond. I kind of outlined for you the undesignated monies. Now, I'm going to draw your attention to the fact again that I only outlined the undesignated monies. These are not all of the monies that are available in those particular bond funds. For example, I did not itemize interest earnings. In the 2011 bond, I did not itemize something that we talked about, bond control. Those are things that we went over in the workshop. Those are additional monies that are there. But I did point to the undesignated monies, which means they are not allocated for anything specific and therefore we kind of refer to them as surplus that would fund these items. The goal here would be to finally expend all of the 2005 bond that we've been attempting to do and make some great headway on the 2011 bond as well. One of the other things I want to point out is that these items are somewhat of an estimate at this point. The procurement process still has to take place, which means, you know, hard proposals still have to be obtained. The amounts could change a little bit. That also means that they won't appear on future reports until such time as P O's are actually issued to encumber the funds for those purchases or contracts, et cetera. So as I've said before, we also have the 2016 bond. We're in the fifth year of our 2016 bond. I know that that doesn't sound right because it was 2016 and it seems like my math is off by a year. But when you approve a bond in May of 16, the first projects you can possibly begin to put on the ground don't occur until the summer of 2017. So we are in our fifth year. We are now in the process of looking at where we will kind of end in the 2016 bond. And gratefully, we have money, for example, to take care of Grapevine High School and the item that you just approved. We'll begin looking a little bit harder at what we have in the 2016 bond by way of those types of monies as well. And as Diane has mentioned to you, we'll talk about kind of that short range, long range plan that we want to look at in the summer with, you know, for whatever the board determines would be appropriate for the use of those dollars. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the appropriation of 2005 and 2011 bond surplus funds for the capital improvement projects listed on the spreadsheet in the total amount of $3,375,785.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Oh, is that Jorge?
I move that we approve the Brian's recommendation.
Thank you, Jorge. In a second. Becky, a second. Thank you. Questions? See you in none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. It's a great description of that. Thank you very much. Move on to item M, Act on Appropriation of the 2011 Bond Undesignated Funds for Critical Capital Repairs and Upgrades.
Again, Paula, if you'll take us through this item, please.
Happy to. To keep the district from having to fund unforeseen crap. You know, out of 20, 30 years, it had to happen. All right.
Kyle, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Paula.
I'm sorry, Kyle.
Critical capital needs.
Is that a record?
We.
Explain your items.
We need, we need to make sure there's a mute button on Paula's.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness.
The bottom line is, we've had an amount of money for these items in the past. We've spent those monies over a period of time, three or four years. I gave you examples of how those funds have been used. We always tell the board about that, those critical needs that are unforeseen and come up. We're down to about $54,000. I mentioned during the March workshop that I'd be coming back and asking you to replenish that. So $250,000 is the amount that's being requested, basically bring that up to a little over $300,000. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. Recommendations for the board trustees to approve the appropriation of $250,000 from undesignated 2011 bond funds to be used for critical capital repairs and upgrades.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation, but I love the description that Paula gave.
Yes. In a second. Only a second. Any questions for Paula's explanation?
I think she summed it right up.
Any questions for Paula or Kyle? See you in none. All those in, yes? For Paula. None. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. I think from now on, Paula, we need a, we need a statement of what you're going to say so we know when to mute you. You know, Paula, I've been doing this for 17 years. In 17 years, that's the first time you've ever, I think you're okay.
Thank you, Louis.
Move on to item N, Act on the Resolution Regarding Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Three and to Adjust the Board Policy CB Local State and Federal Revenue Sources.
Yes, these, these adjustments to our policies for S R three are a recommendation from T E A. Paula, anything else you'd like to add to that, please?
Yes. One of the things that they provided to districts is a sample resolution, not typically the way that we bring forward policy changes to you. We typically show that to you in our policy and I did include that. I believe the reason that Tasby went with the resolution model was the narrow timeframe in which they had to provide that to districts who probably have an assortment of policies. So we took what was in their proposed resolution and looked at our own policy internally. And as you understand, this is about the S R three funding that's become available to school districts. So as we looked at CB Local, that is the policy, there was really only one item that needed to be addressed and that was the part about the public notice and how the district was going to do that. The policy already authorizes the superintendent to, you know, make application for grants and awards and things of that nature. And so that is unchanged as far as that is concerned. So you have a resolution that includes one bullet item and then immediately on page 51, I went ahead and showed it to you in the more traditional way, which is to show you approximately the same language and where it would be within the policy and the blue language there. The district shall provide public notice through an information item at a board meeting and by publishing information on the district's website. So that is how the district would handle it going forward as far as CB Local. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the resolution regarding S R three and board policy CB Local as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion?
Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
In a second. Thank you, Louis. Any questions? See you in none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Those are all of our action items. The remainder of our items are information only. Move on to item O, Presentation from Synergistics LLC on the District's Energy Conservation Program.
As we're getting set up, Paula, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Thank you. So we have a client manager with Synergistic, Wayne Calderon. And I'll allow him to introduce one of his partners here. And then Kent is also in the audience, if you will. That is our energy specialist provided to us by Synergistic. And they have a little bit of just continuing good news about the program.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. So as she said, I'm Wayne Calderon. I'm the client manager here. So I manage Kent. I manage a partnership. I work with Paula. And I think that's the first time I've heard her with a tongue twister. So hopefully that doesn't come back up on me while I'm up here. But I have with me Doug Bilyeu, Vice President of Sales, and of course Kent Hall, your embedded energy specialist. Just wanted to give you an update. We want to provide an update twice a year if we can. Last time we were in here was May when we did vote, when you did vote at that point to extend our partnership. So grateful for that. So key program objectives, cost savings via reduced utility spend, maybe some of the things that I'm going to go through a little bit, optimized building and comfort systems and a culture of sustainability. Over the life of the program, we're 73 months into currently. And I like that the health services like to round up the numbers. I'm going to call that 3.5 million. A cumulative cost avoidance savings, 33% reduction in energy use E U I, which is natural gas, electricity, their blend, their different units. We blend that unit and divide it by square footage and that's your E U not E U I number. And overall, 19% savings over the life of the program. Here's your energy use intensity over time. Started here at G C I S D when the partnership started at a 44 E U I, currently at a 28. And I was surprised to hear Paula making recommendations about some construction because you can see that little pump there from about April 2018 up until about August 2019. That's a lot of construction related usage there. But the national average E U I is about a 50. Neighboring clients would be a 38. And then right here at G C I S D, again, you guys are at 28. So neighboring would be, I'm sorry, I said national, regional average. That's going to be Texas, Oklahoma, Louisiana, Arkansas. Neighboring right here in Texas is a 38. And then here we're at 28. So great job there. Cost per square foot over time started at $1.17, currently at 74 cents square foot overall, about a 37% decrease in cost per square foot. And this is a slide I really love. Over the time of the partnership, we added 273, 274,000 square feet and a overall have a raw savings of a million dollars a year, generally speaking, depending on which year you're looking at, whether it's construction or not. But that's really exciting to have the added square footage and still see savings. So that's always a goal of ours to make sure when you do add square footage, you don't see an increase in your budget and your spend. So the reduction in the, in the use, this is kind of a, how it impacts, you know, and we've moved towards a green environment, reducing 3,748 CO2 emissions from home electricity for use in one year, meaning the reduction in the consumption here is the equivalent to that. It's the equivalent to greenhouse emissions from tons of waste recycled instead of move to the landfill. It's equivalent to removing the average vehicle, removing 53,908 miles driven from a car. And then you see the 367,000 tons of carbon sequestered from trees grown for 10 years. So pretty impactful. GreenX is a software technology that we've employed and it's something that Kent uses for auditing. We use that for keeping track. It's kind of our workflow tool. We also pull data from, from your utility providers and that pushes to our software. And so I just want to start off by saying Kent has audited 5,445 times in buildings. In 2020, 350 of those audits, 353 faults were generated and 110 alerts. And what that means is a fault means he walks in and he sees something that's not within the guidelines. He can take care of it right then, right? Act on it. An alert is something that has to go to maintenance for repair, follow up. There needs to be a meeting. I might meet with Paula to discuss something. Here's some energy conservation measures that we can move forward on. And again, GreenX interval data, what that means is something's happening on your utility meters that's outside of what we would see or what we want to see within the guidelines of the energy program. So when we see that usage, let's say 3:00 AM, some kind of equipment came on. And so there's going to be alert that goes to Kent to say, something came on last night at 3:00 AM. So tomorrow, he's going to check it out and see what happened at 3:00 AM. Oh. And then this is just closing. Building on success. Continue to develop conservation. You know, what can we do here? What can you do at home? Want to incorporate kids, get them excited about it. Help teachers, not just how can you impact your space, but what can you do at home to protect the environment? Continue to work strategically about around extended breaks. Those are the biggest opportunity for savings. Communicate the program through media, newsletters, websites. We definitely want to put PR around there to tell the good stories. We're kind of coming out the backside of this COVID, but really been a great time to talk about some things that are positive. We want to save to reinvest dollars where it matters and celebrate Energy Star Building Certifications. If everyone's moving forward together, success takes care of itself. And I just want to thank everybody involved, school board for voting to have this. The community, maintenance staff is a big part. Kent is working on a daily basis with the maintenance staff about the opportunities throughout the district, employees and leaders. And of course, Paula. We couldn't get it done without the hard work that Paula does to partner with us. So thank you. Any questions?
I'll tell you thank you because I know we've been doing this for 73 months and Kent, you've been, you're not seen very much because you're usually walking to parking lot at 3:00 AM in the morning or walk into buildings. But you know, here we are. We have emails that we just got. You know, I love the emails that we get. Okay, there's your summer shutdown protocol. Or you sent out an email prior to spring break. Hey, protocol for shutting down your classroom and your equipment. And I know that takes everything from Paula to maintenance to you and just all of the programs helping because it's a group effort. It takes all 18,000 employees we got to make it work. And I like seeing that because it even reminds me, oh, yeah, you know, I'm going on vacation. Let's turn some things down. Let's shut them things off. So I've even started using it. So I appreciate that.
I've become an energy czar myself. I know Kent is that way at his home and as well as Doug. It just gets in our blood and, you know, we really look for the opportunity. So thank you for the opportunity to give you an update. Any more questions?
Becky?
Yeah. In the same vein as Louis, you know, my, my two comments as I'm looking through this, number one, you know, rare is the school district, I think, unless they've been smart and hired you guys to add square footage over this time, but have the utility costs go down. I mean, that's, it's wonderful. And but I think the second thing, you know, to your comment about the emails, the buy-in by all of our campuses, by all of our employees is huge. And I know, you know, just one individual, you know, I'm plugging, you know, all all the iPads that would be left charging over spring break or something, you know, that adds up. And then the fact that we're then able to translate that into, you know, one-time payments for our staff, sometimes an appreciation for them making those efforts that do pay off. I I'm amazed we've been with y'all for 73 months now. But every time y'all come to us, it's with good news. So thank you.
I love getting out there in the buildings with Kent and see the participation with custodians, teachers, principals, et cetera. There's a lot of hard work to get there, but it's there. Thank you for that. That's all I have.
Any other questions for? No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All of you. Move on to item P, the 2020-2021 budget update.
Yes, this is the update for this current school year. Diane?
Hey, Dr. Ryan. So this is our monthly update. We are now have 10 months of actual data, only two more months left in the fiscal year. So if you turn to page 69, this is where we can kind of go over the numbers. Now, this is the report that we discussed in the budget workshop that kind of compares our budget to what we're projecting. And looking at our revenues, we're projecting 138.6 million. That's our revenues less recapture because that's kind of our net revenue compared to a budget of 141 million. We are short about 2.5 million in our revenue. A lot of that is due to COVID-related issues with tuition, et cetera. But looking on the expenditure side, we are projecting expenditures of 142.5 million compared to a budget of 148.4 million. So on the expenditure side, we have a favorable variance there. If these projections hold true, we would use 3.9 million of fund balance, leaving a estimated fund balance of 54.2 million. We are currently budgeted to use 7.4 million. So that 3.9 million is is about 3.4 less than what we have budgeted. Any questions?
Any questions for Diane?
Nope. Thank you, ma'am.
Move on to item two, the demographic update.
Yes, I'll ask Diane to introduce this as well.
Yes, tonight we have Brent Alexander with School District Strategies to give us a demographic update. If you guys got a chance to look through the information, there's a lot of really good information here. And so I will just turn it over to Brent and let him get started.
Thank you, Diane. Somebody says to bring that up. Well, thank you, Diane, Dr. Ryan, board members. Pleasure to be here again tonight for our annual update on the district's demographics. Quite a bit to cover, so let's get started. As we do each year, I give you the latest population and household numbers that we get from our national data source. These will be the last estimates that we get before official 2020 census numbers are delivered. So you can see here that the the estimates for 2020, just about 87,500 residents live in the district and just over 34,000 total households. So these estimates show about an 18% increase back to the 2010 census. So it'll be very interesting to see how close they were once we get the official numbers. Now note, the timing of the official numbers has now been pushed to late summer. We're hearing initial numbers should be released in September. But the most important information that I'm that I'm really anxious to see that is critical to get a better understanding of of things like the age of households here in the district. That data is not expected to be be released until December. So we're going to be waiting here towards the end of the year before we can actually get some of that block level data that I think will be very important or very telling once we are able to see it. Now, this slide here shows all of the official 2020-21 enrollment numbers for the 89 DFW public school districts. You can see the most densely populated districts populated in dark red. Note that these are the official numbers from T E A. These teams number do include things like tuition-based prepay. The Grapevine-Collville numbers do include the I University prep numbers. So when you look at our enrollment history, we typically show the fall snapshot numbers without including tuition-based prepay or the I University prep student numbers as represented here in this chart. So when those numbers are excluded, the district's official enrollment for 2020-21 is 12,006,18. Now, that's a substantial decline of 498 students compared to 2019-20. When the numbers for I University prep and prepay are included, you can see that enrollment, the enrollment reduction that we've seen over the last year is not as severe, down about 299 students or a 2.1% decline instead of 3.8%. But no matter how you look at it, the COVID-19 environment has had a major impact on enrollment here in the district, disrupting the pattern by 2% to 4%. But I want you to understand that this is not unusual. So what you see here on this slide is a comparison of 2019-20 enrollment and to 2020-21 for all the DFW districts. Note that 55 of the 89 districts in DFW saw a loss over the past year, represented by in blue with the largest districts in Tarrant and Dallas County seeing major losses over the last year. Now, some of those districts like Prosper and Salina up in Collin County, where we're seeing some of the fastest growth, were able to be somewhat immune from the the COVID-related losses. But back in early, the early part of this year, the T E A was reporting that the state had seen enrollment decline on average about 3%. So you all, being in that 2% to 4% range, mirrors what a lot of other districts have been experiencing. This slide here shows the year-over-year numbers as well as the annual percentage growth numbers for both enrollment with and without the I University prep and tuition-based prepay numbers. So a key thing to remember is that even prior, prior to COVID, the district was had seen enrollment decline seven out of the past 10 years. So we've talked about that in previous demographic updates. This last year, obviously, the pandemic made the situation worse, as you can see. So COVID-19 had the biggest, the biggest impact on elementary enrollment. You can see in 2020, the total number for prepay through five, down to under 5,500 total students. COVID had less of an impact of the middle school and the high school numbers. Here in Grapevine-Collville, they were down slightly. But most places across the state, the middle school numbers were were leveled to up slightly. And many of the high school numbers that I've seen with the districts that I've worked with are at record highs. So the main effect from COVID has really been on those younger students. The computer has a XDR extension. Thank you. Sorry. All right, so this slide here shows the enrollment totals by grade. I've highlighted in red the record class sizes. So you can see that last wave that occurred prior to 2010 at the elementary level. So we've been watching the class totals and behind that wave gradually decline, especially since the 2016 school year. But focus in on the kindergarten number for this year. That dropped from about 900 down to 740. That's an 18% year-over-year drop in kindergarten. So that was a major area where the district can be attributed to the losses that we've seen during this COVID pandemic. You can see a grade level comparison from last year to this year in the chart down at the bottom. One of the key things that we continue to watch and is important to remember, especially for projections going forward, is that the average size of the grades, seven through 12 today, is about 1,036 students. Compare that to 881 in grades K through six. So you have 155 student built-in drop every year as those larger classes move out. And now the situation has been made worse with that drop in prepay. So, or excuse me, in kindergarten. So more on this in a minute when we get to the projections. Now, we looked at, we looked at more of the student mobility numbers to to get a better sense of how many of the students are out there that are missing. When I'm, when I'm talking about students that are missing, I want you to understand that these are students that did not participate in virtual learning or are in person. These are students that were there. And then for for health concerns, their parents pulled them out of school, a lot of times without any communication with the district about their about their status. So this is a comparison that we that we started last year, looking at the student ID information and and looking at how many new IDs versus student IDs that are no longer present the following year. You can see that represented by the orange bars, that about, for the last three years, from 2016 to 19, to be more specific, the average new newcomer for total for the district was just under 1,200. So you can see this year that the, on the blue bar, that the levers was similar to what we've seen in the past, but didn't get the newcomers. A lot of kindergartners, you would think it's kindergarten in that number. Well, that is actually that newcomer in first through 12th grade. Kindergartens are, in this analysis, kindergarten is held out of the numbers. So you actually missed about 218 against the previous three-year average from students in first through 12th grade. Now, the birth rate, we've got, we've got two more years of data. You can see here that, as we've talked about before, more students are enrolled than originated here. But they, the number of students in prepay versus the local birth rate has mirrored each other for many of the the last several years until 2020. You can see that how that 740 just enrollment this year disrupts the pattern there. We were expecting the number to be in that 875 to 900 range going into this past fall. The data for the next two years as a predictor is somewhat mixed. That number there for 2021 does reflect the highest birth total that we've seen since 2004. But then the number for 2017, which represented by the 2022 column, actually falls back to a five-year low. So based on this data, enrollment in kindergarten should be around 800 for the next couple of years. Now, we continue to watch the transfer report. You'll see that the blue bars are students that transfer in. Now, these numbers continue to grow as the I University prep campus continues to see expanding enrollment. But note, we did see a little bit of an increase from students that transfer, transfer out over the last year. It was about 48 students. It's interesting, a lot of districts that are seeing an increase in students that live in the district but are attending other places. It's due to charter schools. You all actually aren't really seeing that. It's more of your neighbors. Neighboring districts have gradually taken just a little bit more over the last year. So you can see Birdville, Carroll, and H E B all have seen increased numbers over the last year.
Can I ask a question? So does that mean that those are G C I S D students that are transferring to those districts?
That is, or those numbers represent students that live within the district boundary that are attending that in that district? Or one of the charter schools that you see listed here? So you can see there is really only a net increase of six for the charter schools. There is additional information in here regarding the geocoding. I shared a lot of that information with Dr. Ryan and and his team. So if anybody has any specific questions about that, I'd be happy to share it with you, though we don't have time to cover all of it tonight. But this will give you the total number of K through 12 students using the elementary attendance zones. All right, let's turn our attention to the future and what what's left for the district's housing market. Just a couple of key things here.
Sir?
I have a question, I have a question on the previous slide. So that number, maybe I don't, I didn't understand. The 1387 at Timberline, what does that mean?
In the Timberline, it's in the geographic area of the district defined by the Timberline Elementary Boundary, there are 1,387 total K through 12 students enrolled.
In G C I S D?
Yes.
Okay. And the previous-
These are enrolled students and how they break out geographically.
On the previous two slides, there were residents of G C I S D that were going to other schools.
Correct.
Or other districts. Like, for example, a teacher that lives in Grapevine that teaches in Arlington, is taking their kid over there. Okay, thank you.
As you're probably well aware of, the Dallas-Fort Worth housing market is is at some of the highest numbers that we've ever seen here locally. In fact, we are at record activity for for new home starts. You can see that huge surge by the blue line in the district. The housing market has been driven by these major factors that have all kind of come together while job growth has been down. You know, a year ago at this time, I remember speaking with you all on a Zoom call. You know, nobody really knew where we were headed. Here we are, a year later, looking at the most activity we've ever seen in a 12-month period. So, you know, a lot of that has been driven by the mortgage rate dropping under 3% and giving more households a higher affordability. But the millennial demographic moving into their middle and late 30s starting families has been very important. Now, this is, this is critical, and it ties into what you all are seeing. And part of the the enrollment decline, as I'm about to show you, is because there's, the housing market has climbed to such high demand, prices have grown so high that I believe now that you have crossed this threshold that other districts such as a Lovejoy or an Allen are experiencing where the houses are now so expensive that that it's now out of reach, even with the the low interest rates for younger families to buy a home here. And so more on that in a moment, but just go through these macro slides. They're in here for your reference. You know, that slide that summarized those factors. Job growth is still a negative, but we're, we're continuing to climb back. You can see how Texas, since where we were a year ago, has has added a lot of jobs, but we're still, still in negative territory. Same here in DFW. Lost over, this slide shows it better. Back in April, there were, there was a loss of nearly 406,000 jobs. We've gained 342,000 jobs back. Look at the private education and private health services in the leisure and hospitality sectors. And those are where you find a lot of your hourly wage jobs. And we're seeing those the slowest to recover. They're the biggest impacted by by COVID and the slowest to recover. So, you know, it's certainly possible that some of the losses here in the district have come from from families that have lost their job or locally and has either moved or they just are currently keeping their kids at home. Now, moving into the the district's housing, the resale data is shown here. The numbers have been consistent since 2013, a little more than 900. The numbers have been consistent since twenty thirteen, a little more than nine hundred a year. But that that growing value, that median price, that's a typo down on that last bullet. Make make note of that. It should say that it's increased by eighty three percent since two thousand eleven. So that's part of that point where the market has grown to where a large number of households can no longer afford to buy a home in the district. What we're seeing from millennial households is their target is in that three seventy five range. So that's why three seventy five and down. So that's why if you talk to other board members in other districts, you'll see this these huge increases all around the outer ring of Dallas Fort Worth. In the north, you can go all the way up to Van Alstine. And out east, Voice City, you know, down south, Waukesha, Hachimah, Luthian, and go out, and go out west all the way to Brock. So that's, that's where the market has gone out and in people, you have to understand that in the last year, there's been a major psychological change. The importance of a house has jumped up in people's mind more than it was pre-COVID. Many people are still working from home. So the combination of that is that there's less of a I guess, a negative put into the the commute time. So it's allowed people to move further out and those those more affordable areas are seeing majority of the boom experiencing. Now, that's not to say that the higher end of the market's not growing. It it actually is, but you all have seen the prices of the homes here move beyond where a large portion of the newer buyers can't afford it. But with that said, there's still about eighty to ninety a year on new home construction here in the district. These last twelve months ending March thirtieth, there were eighty eight started, seventy eight moved into a little few more lots brought in. Most of these have been in the city of Colleyville. Thirty percent in the city of Grapevine. You know, fifty five percent is still, I was going to say that Creekside Colleyville has still been the dominant producer of new houses, still producing a little more than forty homes a year in that district. But as you can see there at the top, they're now out of lots. So what's left is a lot of types of developments that have ten fifteen homes in them and prices have pushed into the million dollar range of a lot of these. So Creekside Colleyville feeds into OC Taylor. You can see it's been the most active zone eating into Colleyville Middle School, all by Grapevine. And then most of the activity has been in the Colleyville Heritage Attendant Zone. So more on the pricing, remember the resale of four thirty eight, this is existing, or excuse me, the new home price is now the median has been about six nineteen. So you can see that it's up there and near a near record highs over these last two years. So what's left from the single family perspective? Totals about three hundred and eighty two lots that are in process and planned across the district. You can see some of the the breakdown. We've got a few more traditional single family lots, but we have a few more town homes and things that are coming. But again, a lot of small developments that we're going to see custom houses built on over the next couple of years. We got some aerial photos at the first of April. Just quickly go through some of these. Just so you know, on the north side of the district, the Lakeside Village and Lakeside Crossing Development, that's primarily in Louisville, I see, does have a section that's in in Grapevine, Colleyville. What you see right there, about ten to eleven lots. But there, there's a potential that we could see a few more homes up there. We're not expecting this to generate a lot of students, but I do say if you 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 all are aware, if someone does ask, you know, which attended zone or what school district they're in, there are some that are here in GC. And the Oak Alley subdivision here continues to progress. These are expected to be over a million dollars each. Reserve at Bear Creek, this is sixty nine townhome lots that are coming. So the more affordable portion of the housing market will be in more specialty type product and that tends to yield fewer kids. And then next to Bear Creek Elementary, you can see a small infill track going in as well as other infill tracks like Preston Manor out next to Oakley. So in addition to the single see the the railroads? Oh, yeah, it's I have to get my mouth out, too. Now, that's a, that's a development. You can see there, there's some new houses in that subdivision. You're welcome. In addition to the single family, you know, back up, just remember that since twenty eighteen nineteen school year, over twelve hundred new apartments have been delivered in the district. So we're continuing to watch those developments lease out. So in in total, we're looking at about eight hundred and eighty units that are left here, including the Carter, which is the projected to be built and open in the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three timeframe. So those numbers, as well as the single family numbers, should be built out within the next five to seven years. You can see that on this forecast slide, the the blue are your single family closing. So we're we're expecting about eighty five to ninety five new homes a year for the next three years and then gradually see the single family supply go towards build out. And then those additional apartments should be leased out and built by twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Now, what are the homes yielding? This update, the COVID had an impact on on the the yield, as you might expect, with the losses across the district, the yield for single family homes dropped to zero point four six. But you can see that the Creekside at Colleyville and some of the numerous subdivisions there in the table at the bottom have been producing a little bit higher yield, more like a zero point five three, which is more like what we've seen these last two years. Key takeaway from this slide is that it's taking about five houses to give you an elementary student. Most districts extreme. So that's, that's part of the the slower growth at the the younger grade level. Apartment wise, this has also impacted enrollment. The yield for this past school year is zero point two one per unit. That's, that's down, but it has fluctuated the in previous years. But note that from nineteen to twenty, we did see a slight reduction in middle school. And the high school number was up a net of nineteen, but you can see that the enrollment in our apartment sample was down about a hundred and six students, four point four percent decline. So this is something that I'm also seeing with the districts that we work with across the state, that the apartment numbers are down. So we hear stories of they're not really gone. They're there. They're out playing, but they're not enrolled in school. So that leads us into the enrollment projections. So the biggest question that all of the districts that I work with have going forward is that percentage that was lost. Are they coming back? When are they coming back? How many are coming back? You know, we can all speculate that that the conditions are improving. When we did these projections, I know I worked with Dan back in in February and March. You know, we weren't seeing a lot of, or you all weren't telling me that, you know, we're seeing a dramatic increase in the in people coming in in the spring or people that are calling, hey, we're going to be back in in the fall. If that's changed, speak up. But I'm just telling you, I'm not, in most districts, it hadn't changed. It's it's quiet. It's or normal or just below normal. And so we're all guessing that, hey, fifty percent, seventy five percent are going to come back in the fall. So we've done the enrollment projections using some of those different scenarios. The low scenario is what the district looks like if kindergarten comes in about seven hundred and sixty five. So you get back to back years of seven forty and seven sixty five. It sets you on, remember that one fifty five loss? It sets you in that that declining pattern. Now, the moderate assumes that that kindergarten is more in that eight hundred range, like I showed you on the birth rate chart. We see the housing add a little bit more and and we see about fifty percent of those kids start to come back over the next two to three years. And it would push us back towards that twelve, seven hundred range. Now, I estimate that there are about about four hundred kids that are out there that are that were here in twenty nineteen. Can't tell exactly where they are, but that's what's, that's what the geocoding shows. So you get back most of those kids, then you should jump back towards that what was previously our moderate growth scenario, which is now the red line. Now, I say all this with now knowing that the mask mandates are changing, the CDC changes. Is that going to change the attitudes of parents that had the health concerns that took their kids out either, they either sent them to their grandparents in other places or they've been homeschooled? Will that change their attitude that they will bring their kids back in the fall? That's, that's a great question, right, for all of us. But things are changing rapidly, so it's it's certainly possible. But we're being cautious with these these numbers. So you all understand what it looks like if the majority of the kids do stay out there and whether they've moved away, whether they are in or being homeschooled.
So when you're referencing that, right, the the reason, so how did y'all arrive at the the idea that the reason that the parent, that those numbers have dropped are for health reasons versus some parents who decided they wanted potentially schools with different protocols than maybe what we were doing? What?
Well, when I'm, when I'm making that comment, that's a general observation from all districts that I work with. That most parents that have, that have been able to be contacted said, well, we took our student out for health concerns.
Interesting. I know that's a big
We'll return when things are safe again. But when is that? That's what we don't know at this point.
Interesting. So.
Because that's an individual household decision.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that might tell us maybe what we need to do to let parents know what our campuses are going to look like in the fall. You know, maybe for Amy, is not off the hook yet, right? That reassuring parents that our campuses are safe as well as welcoming them back in. Good.
Yes, absolutely. That is, that is what a lot of districts are, they're they're strategizing on how to go back to the parents and emphasize how it's going to be different, how it's going to be safer. Hopefully, that will get some of these students back inside the, inside the buildings. I know that's a lot to cover. Quickly, the numbers for per campus are in here for your reference, but I'll I'll move ahead and answer any other questions.
Can you, is there a slide, and I don't want you to go through all of them. Is there a slide in here I'm just missing, other than the I University Prep? You have the transfers in that are going to I University Prep. What about our transfer? I'm just curious on the number, our transfer ends that they live within Colleyville, Grapevine. But they go, they're zoned for HEB or South Lake or Keller. Do you have a number that shows us how many are coming into GCISD for that?
I did not make that slide, but that that data is available.
I'm just curious that that number.
Because when you go
Is, and is that number included in in this total student number?
Yes. So typically, you have about six hundred students that come in from the outside of the district. That number has not changed. It's in the geocoding, it shows that it stayed level. What changed was the students within the boundary.
So is that, are they going to I University Prep? Are they going to a true brick and mortar?
The, the, what we map are non-I University Prep students.
Okay.
Those are your, your out of district transfers. Open enrollment kids and employee kids.
I'm just curious the number. So you're saying it's around six hundred? Any other questions for him?
Let me try to understand. You mean six hundred excluding I University Prep?
Correct.
Wow, okay. Right?
So just, just to kind of make sure that I understood, it it looks to me that the pricing of the houses, I mean, people are moving here, but the prices are prohibited for people with young children. You know, you you talk about three hundred seventy cap on the price that they're looking for. And we got under over four hundred thousand, maybe more. And the new homes are even higher, right, the prices, so.
So this is fascinating, because these last five to seven years, I've been asked that question more than anything. How are people with young families affording all of these houses that are in the five hundred range? Well, you know, we talk about that drop in interest rate from five percent to three percent. Gave the median price household over four hundred dollars a month in buying power. So if you have a dual salary household, you know, you can afford a lot more than you ever were able to afford in in most generations life stage. You know, it used to, you had to be further along in the life stage to be able to afford the more expensive house. Well, the interest rate, as well as growth in salaries, has allowed people to buy beyond life stage. Well, now that line for a lot of the homes has moved even higher as as materials get higher and builders or material costs get higher and they they pass those down to consumers. We've seen that line. And when the neighborhoods start to get into the six and seven hundred range, there aren't any elementary kids, or the yield goes way down. Where, but if it's in the five hundred, even the six hundreds, because Prosper is an example, whereas all day, elementary kids in those homes are six hundred to eight hundred thousand. Bingo. But you know, I've seen in other places where that line, a builder, not only can, they their sales slow when they move across that six hundred, seven hundred threshold. They move back under it, go into the four fifty to six hundred range, sell them all day. So that's, that's just, you all are kind of, you were right on the line for many years. And then these last couple of years, it's moved beyond it.
Because the school districts are so great, people trying to get in here to, it makes the value of the houses go up.
That is a key, that is true.
That's, yeah.
The values, look, look at that chart of the existing, the school district is a part of that value.
That is true.
Well, yeah, you know, you mentioned the map, though, that does show the declines. When you really look at those numbers, though, out of all the districts that we touch, right? Our drop was the lowest with the exception of Capel. I know they actually, they still have like fifty percent of their kids still online. And they're, they are even possibly more of a unicorn than And they're, they are even possibly more of a unicorn than we are. You know, with regard to just little quirks. And then of course Northwest, I'm sure that's skewed by, you know, they've got so much building going on out there that of course, I'm shocked the growth was only 1.4%.
So you're top growing housing markets up in Denton is Argyle, Denton. In fact, Northwest has the most starts of all the school districts. It actually surpassed Prosper and Denton.
Yeah, but we, we did really, really well. I mean, HEB down 3.6, Birdville down 3.6, Carol was down more than us.
Yeah, I like this slide because it puts it in perspective of how we compared to other districts. So I do have a question basically on this. If I'm not mistaken, earlier when you were talking numbers, you said the state of Texas enrollment is down about four to 4.4%. If I remember correct, as a state as a whole, is that right?
Well, initially the state, the TEA was reporting it was a 3% loss. It ends up, the data that they published in April ends up a 2.2% loss.
So my follow up is we hear about, and this is an overarching statement and question is we hear about everybody moving here from Washington, California, Chicago due to our growth in business, corporate headquarters relocating, our favorable tax treatment, and how we weather the storm, whether it's a financial of O8 or housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if the state is losing this 2.8 to three, I mean, 2.2 to 3%, but we're here in the opposite of all the headlines of everybody moving here, where are they going? Or where's, where are they going? Or does it go back to your question that they're just staying at home? They're not being enrolled in school or they're being homeschooled?
Well, there's a lot more to that.
Yeah.
Because you've got population that's moving towards the I-35 corridor, you know, west. Go and see what the West Texas School Districts are reporting. So that's, that's part of, so the numbers could actually be worse if without all the people coming in from out of state. So we're hearing from the builders that people have come to Texas without a job. They, they, and they're buying a house without a job because they're so positive about the environment that they've got a job and they'll be fine. So. But I just want you all to understand that you're, you're in the same boat with so many other districts that are trying to figure out what this means for the budget, what this means next year. I would just probably just have to say, you're going to have to have, have some patience to have to see how it starts looking, you know, in August, really.
So does this, we, we've talked about the millennials changing their attitude in terms of buying a home doesn't look negative because of low interest rates and working from home. And we've talked about the price of the home, you know, new home construction being 618,000 with our median at 406, I think. Have we, we haven't talked about the empty nesters. So my question is, is with all this.
I'm not moving, Louis. Not moving.
But I got something that'll be gone pretty soon, though. I'm not, my, my wife said something the other day, I said, I'm dying in my house. My question is, is, or how's this affecting the empty nesters and our aging population, those over, let's call it 65? I mean, or because, yeah, you can sell and make money, but where are you going to go? You, you're not staying here. You got to be moving somewhere else in Denver and, I mean, all the other places are up as well. So what's happening to our, our aging population? Sorry, Mom and Dad.
That, that is a great question. Part of that, look at the slide where we've seen the fallback aids is aging in place is part of that. People have had their kids go through the school district and graduate and they've stayed in their house. So that, that's why when I was talking about the census data being so important, we can kind of look and see what the, the appraisal district gives us, but really we need a, a good count of the age of the households down to the block level. We don't really have that. It's all estimates.
You said December is?
Yes. So, you know, we may get a map of the district and you, it shows two thirds of the district households are over 50 or, or into the, into the point where their kids are no longer elementary age.
And the reason I ask that, I mean, my mom and dad retired seven years ago and they bought the house at the end of my street. And then last year, 18 months ago, another elderly couple bought the house next to them. And then the house next to me is a five bedroom house. A young couple bought it last week, no kids. And I'm just like, okay, what's, you know, it's so interesting. It's, there, there is not a model right now. The last 18 years of data or last 10 years of data is basically been thrown up in the air. And we're in this 12 month past, a 12 month looking forward of, we really don't know because of COVID, taxes, relocate, people moving for a job. Do you ever think you'd be standing there saying, people are moving across the United States without a job? You know, I mean, that's, there's a lot of interesting factors going on here. So it'll be interesting to see how we're affected in the next 12 months out of this.
You know, and something that could be happening, I hear that we, we see a lot it, that the houses are turning over, but a household with three students is being replaced by a household with one or two. And so it's gradually bringing enrollment down. We're seeing a lot of empty nesters choose to move to near their grandchildren in one of those more affordable neighborhoods. They're down the block, but they can walk and pick up the grand kid and walk them home. So, you know, that, that's a whole nother subject, you know, when it comes to the empty nester and their buying habits, but we, we have seen yields in subdivisions go down here recently as more empty nurses are buying in traditionally.
So my parents moved here, be close to their grandkids when they retired.
Very interesting. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you.
We'll switch over and now it's our update for the 2016 bond program.
Yes, Shannon is here from Huckabee and Paula, any other introductions?
As soon as they bring that up, I'm just going to let Shannon get right to it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. This update to the 2016 bond is not going to be much different than last month. I promise I will not read every line item, so it'll go a little bit faster. I'll start with the 2020 renovations. We are still currently working or in a holding pattern on Colleyville Heritage High School for the fire alarm. Once school is out this week, the Lee Lewis should be able to start next week on completing that fire alarm swap out, doing all of the testing, and then that will be complete by August 2nd. On the elementary schools, we did our final punch walk on the 30th of April. We did have a couple of items that needed to be addressed. Those have been addressed or are being addressed currently. And that will be completed and wrapped up. And then we are doing our final rounds of test and balancing on the HVAC systems. For the 2021 renovations, we mentioned last time that some of this work, it's not glamorous, but it is needed for long-term to provide maintenance and upgrades to these buildings to help support the district. First project is the ECDC. Same scope of work from last time. The only differences to talk about here are, or updates to talk about are with the winter storm damage. We are doing drywall repair as part of the renovation work to the building, but we are not having to replace all the flooring. So that's good news. One less thing that we needed to do. The other thing is the fire alarm. We are not doing a full replacement. We are doing a partial upgrade to the system that has been reviewed by the city of Colleyville and approved already. So that's also good news. This first slide shows pictures of the exterior of the building and work that has already occurred. So we have replaced the sidewalk and the two front handicap parking spaces to meet accessibility for ADA. And this week, provided that the rain lets up, we will doing, we will be doing joint sealant at the exterior pavement to help with long-term of the concrete and maintenance. At the interior of the building, slot cuts have been done and plumbing has been roughed into place for all of the new toilets and sinks for the little ones. Drywall has been put back on one side of the wall for inspections. We're hoping to complete the second side of that this week with tape and bed. And then electrical roughing and ducting for HVAC has happened throughout the building. Next building is the PDEC. So work has not started at this building yet. We do have a permit, but we anticipate starting work next week. That work will run through July 1st. At transportation, we do not have a permit yet. We are still working with the city on that one. I was emailing with them right before I walked in here tonight. We're hoping that we have that permit by end of week, this week. That work also will not start until June, so we are okay on our schedule as of right now. The next one is facility and warehouse. This one, we do have a permit. That work will start June as well. Most of it will wrap up July 31st with the exception of the book warehouse, which will not start until September. Part of that building needs to be used during the summer months to issue school books. So that one will start in September and end in October. Next one is CTMS Creek for the drainage remediation around the building and to the creek. This work, we do have a permit for. Work will start in June and end July 31st. Next one is the admin building and the buildings around admin, which are the central portable buildings in the wood frame facility. I did receive confirmation today that we will have permit for this building tomorrow. Work will start June and in July 31st. Another project that we added on, or a few projects we added on are the, the playground renovations. This is not renovations to the playground, but we are doing the accessibility paths to the playgrounds themselves. So that includes concrete ramps and concrete sidewalks along with joint sealant to those playgrounds. The first one that we are doing that we were able to fit into the schedule this summer along with the other work that we're doing is Brandsford. So that's the plan that you see up there on the screen. And it'll be the south playgrounds to the left of that star. And the other four, yeah, the other four elementary schools, we anticipate having drawings completed August 12th and, or August 13th. They will go to bid around that time, meaning work can start September, October. Okay, Grapevine High School, 300 Hall renovation. Paula gave you guys an update on this one earlier, so I, I won't repeat that. But we are planning to have those drawings completed by next week. Those will go into bidding and then we will have that, those numbers ready for. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. We'll have those drawings ready on June 4th and so the work can start July 1st.
I have a quick question on that one.
Yes.
You know, we mentioned earlier that it was determined that that was an addition that was built at some point. Was the courtyard bigger at some point then? What?
So the, the courtyard was there and the 300 Hall and the three classrooms on the north and south of the 300 Hall were the old library. The classrooms beyond that on the north and south were covered outdoor areas where those lockers were. But that part was replaced and enclosed. So the building, that portion of the building was always there in 1968. And then the 300 Hall and the classrooms were built in 1975.
Lockers, California stuff.
Yes, exactly. It was. Yep. Just like California. So it was the partial renovations in 85.
Or since now. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
But wow, yeah, that bottom picture.
It, it looks worse in the photo than it really is.
Moving on.
Yes, moving on. And now it's Paula's turn.
Well, the rain has plagued the resurfacing of tracks and D areas just a tad. They were attempting to get through cross timbers. And of course, you know, we finish up with the stadium and it's supposed to be early June. They'll obviously be going a little bit further into June, but they are continuing. Paragon has been really diligent constantly, staying in communication with the district of facilities, talking to athletics and rearranging those dates and pushing back. And Calva, who you know, many of you do know, is going to have a very, very busy summer between elementary playgrounds and this furniture and some other pieces that we have going on. She's got a, a lot of moving parts. The auction of certain things has already begun to get things out of the way. And so she's, she's got a lot of work for her summer coming up. Heritage Middle School is really kind of a joint project, if you will. So Lee Lewis is doing the work. Patty and Construction and Michelle and Risk Management are trying to oversee the work. Shannon was kind enough to, to put some into the, some images into the presentation. As you've received updates, you can see flooring is already going back. Painting is in progress. They expect to be complete really here at the end of the month with the restoration of Heritage Middle School. And I'll just go ahead and say they're, they're plugging along. The other contractor is as well on, on the annex. GMS was finished a few weeks ago. So I know that the Heritage Middle Group will be very glad to get back into these classrooms even with school being out.
Do we have any questions? Thank you for staying late.
Thank you, Shannon.
Appreciate it. We move on to item S, review owner contingency expenditures.
Just had one new item and we'll be subject to any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? We're going to item T, review 2021, 2022 board planning calendar.
Yes, so you can see the 21, 22 board planning calendar and it's submitted for your consideration. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? A request for, do I have any requests for reports to the board? Consent agenda. Anyone need anything pulled or a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, the second, Casey's second. Questions? All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Move on to announcements. We have any announcements?
We have three graduations coming up. Thursday, Friday, and then June the 5th for I University Prep.
I went to the film festival, the GCSD Film Festival. It, it was amazing. This, the student work there, documentary, animation, comedy, PSA, drama, the, the students were just incredible and the enthusiasm that Mr. Harris has for his subject and for his students is almost overwhelming. There's a couple of them. I hope we can, well, we'll, we'll see if we can get some sort of viewing of certainly the one on special ed because it was nothing short of just amazing. And by one of our graduating seniors as a matter of fact, so. Yeah, so anyway, take advantage of those opportunities. You know, I know we try to have somebody at something when we get invited. And I appreciated the students reaching out and inviting us to that. It was, it was, and there were teachers there as well too, which that, for a teacher to give up a rainy Saturday night to come to a student event like that, it just, it's the end of a year like this, that was really nice to see as well.
So that is so true. Just, yeah, and put on your calendar, and I'm glad Rachel was here, June 9th, 10th, glad you're here. Is a drive-through. I'm talking about the, oh, it's in person at the MAC. See, I have all the information wrong, so I'm glad you were here. So is there, do you have anything out for volunteers yet? Are you going to be sending? Okay, so what, that's breakfast on June 10th. For the facility workers and custodians, anyone involved, so. Also, you put on your calendar, we, I'm excited this year, we are going to have a back, new teacher luncheon. And yeah, so I'm excited for, for that coming up. And that is August.